التي نخصصها اليوم للحديث عن أدوار النساء في عمليات التعافي وإعادة الأعمار ما بعد النزاعات. وألفت نظر حضراتكم إلى أن اللغة الجلسة هي في اللغة العربية ولمن يرغب تتوفر الترجمة إلى اللغتين الإنجليزية والفرنسية. وستتمتجر جلستنا حتى الساعة الثالثة. أنا اسمنا نادي خليفي وأعمل كمستشار أكلمة لقضية المساواة بين الجنسين في الأسكوى. يسرني أن أيسر هذه الجلسة التي تناكش واحدة من أكثر أهم القضايا في منطقةنا العربية. كما تعلمون يركز المنتدى العربي للتنمية المستدامة كل عام على مراجعة تنفيذ أهداف وغاية محددة من أجندة العشرين تلاتين على المستويين الوطني والاقليمي. وفي هذا العام صلت المنتدى الدعوة على مواديع تمكين المرأة والمساواة بين الجنسين. وعليه تنظم الأسكوى هذه الجلسة بشاركه مع منظمة العمل الدولية برنامج الأمم المتحدة الإنماية برنامج الأمم المتحدة للمستوطنات البشرية ومبادرات تجودة الحياة وهيئة الأمم المتحدة للمرأة. هدفنا من هذه الجلسة هو تصليت الدعوة على كيف تتأثر النزاعات والأزمات الممتدة على النساء والفتيات سوايا من ناحية الحقوق والفرص المتساوية والمشاركة في التنمية والتعافي وإعادة الأعمار. معنا اليوم ستة متحدتين ومتحدثات متميزين سيقدمون رؤى وتحليلات قيمة حول جهود التعافي وإعادة الأعمار من منظور النوع الاجتماعي. سنتكلم أيضا عن العدالة الانتقالية وبناء السلام إلى جانب عرض التجارب واقعية من لبنان وأسرية والعراق. سوف نعطي كل متحدث ومتحدث حوالي عشر دقائق للإجابة على أسئلتنا الإرشادية ومنبعدها نفتح المجال للحوار لمدة خمسطعش دقيقة ومنبعدها نختم جلسة بأبرز التوصيات. شكرا لحضركم معنا اليوم نطلع إلى نقاش غني ومثمر. سنبدأ هذه الجلسة بكلمات افتتحية مع الدكتور معاز دوريد مدير المكتب الليم للدول العربية في هيئة الأمم المتحدة للمرأة. دكتور معاز، اتفضل.
شكرا جزيلا، السلام عليكم، مساء الخير. السيدات والسادة، أصحاب السعادة، الزميلات والزملاء الحضور الكريم. بداية أود أن أريد شكرا بنية عن هيئة الأمم المتحدة للمرأة لمنظمي هذه الجلسة برنامج الأمم المتحدة الإنماية برنامج الأمم المتحدة للاسكن وأيضًا الأسكوى بالإضافة إلى هيئة الأمم المتحدة للمرأة. صباحا في فعاليات هذا المنتدى كانت هناك رسائل قوية وواضحة أن منطقةنا تمر بلحظات تاريخية محفوفة بالمخاطر. ولكن أيضا أحب أن أنوّه بأنها أيضا محفوفة بالفرص ومن ضمن تلك الفرس فرص للتعافي لإعادة الأعمار. من غزة وسوريا والسودان واليامن، من ليبيا والعراق إلى لبنان تتعرض مجتمعاتنا لموجات من النزاعات والأزمات الإنسانية والتحديات الاقتصادية والكوارث الطبيعية والتغير المناخي. وتتدخل أثر الحروب مع محدودية الموارد والاختلالات الاقتصادية والاجتماعية بما فيها نقص حقوق المرأة. فيؤثر ذلك كله في نش حيال يومية للنساء والفتيات والمجتمعات وايضا على مشاركتهن في حفظ السلام والتعافي وبناء المجتمعات. التحديات والنواقص في هذا المجال ظهرت جليا في تقرير الأمين العام للأمم المتحدة لعام عشرين أربعة وعشرين حيث رسم التقرير صورا مقلقة حول مشاركة النساء في قضية الأمن والسلام وحول جهود الحماية من العنف. وبينما تتزايد الصراعات المسلحة وتتزايد العسكرية تتراجع مشاركة المرأة في عمليات السلام. على سبيل المثال في عام عشرين تلاتة وعشرين شكلت النساء أقل من عشرة في المية من المفاوضين المفاوضين في عمليات السلام وأقل من أربعتشر في المية من الوسطاء في اتفاقيات السلام على المستوى العالمي. وحوالي ستة وعشرين وستة من عشرة في المية فقط من الموقعين على اتفاقيات السلام أو اتفاقيات وقف إطلاق النار. وانخفضت نسبة اتفاقيات السلام التي أشارت إلى النساء أو الفتيات أو النوع الاجتماعي انخفضت إلى نسبة ستة وعشرين في المية فقط. هنا أريد أن أنوّه أن منذ قرار مجلس الأمن رقم thirteen خمسة وعشرين ازدادت نسبة الاتفاقيات التي تسكر مسائل وقضية النوع الاجتماعي والمرأة والعنف الجنسي. كان هناك تزايد متطرد منذ عام الفين ولكن في السنوات القليلة الماضية هذا التزايد المتطرد يعني لاقى انخفاض. وطبعا في معظم عمليات السلام يدعى أولئك الذين يشعلون الحروب إلى طاولة المفاوضات بينما يتم تهميش أولئك الذين يسعون إلى السلام الحقيقي مثل النساء والمجموعات النساءية. في أغلب الحالات النساء لستنا جزءا من عمليات السلام على الرغم من أنهن الأكثر تضررا. وليس ذلك فحسب بل هناك زيادة متطردة في النساء والفتيات ضحاية الصراعات المسلحة. على سبيل المثال بين عام عشرين اتنين وعشرين وعشرين تلاتة وعشرين تضعفت نسبة النساء اللواتي قتلنا في النزاع المسلح تضعفت دبل في عام واحد. وبعدين يعني خلال السنتين اللي فاتوا بالطبع وكما أشارت هيئة الأمم المتحدة تكرارا إلى أن سبعين في المية من القتلة في غزة هم من النساء والفتيات. سبعين في المية من الفلسطينيين والفلسطينيات الخمسين ألف اللي قتلوا في غزة سبعين في المية من النساء والفتيات. في كثير من ساعات الصراع ارتفعت مستويات العنف الجنسي بشكل غير مسبوق. وطبعا نلاحظ التجاوزات المروعة في السودان وهي أحداث مؤلمة وغير مسبوق. وبالنسبة لهذه التحولات في المنطقة تطرح التحولات تحديات جمعة وأيضا فرص. ونجد أنفسنا في أمس الحاجة للدفع نحو مشاركة النساء في نبز العنف وبناء السلام وفي التعافي وإعادة الأعمار. والدمج احتياجات النساء والفتيات في الاستجابات الإنسانية وبرامج التنمية من أجل سلام مستدام. على الرغم من تلك الأهمية نجد أن أحد العناصر الاقل نقاشا في أشينة المرأة والسلام والأمن هو إدماع المرأة في التعافي الاقتصادي كعنصر مهم في السعي إلى سلام مستدام. وأظهرت العديد من الدراسات أن الاستثمار في تمكين المرأة economically يعود بفوائد هائلة على كل من السلام والإصدار وعلى البلدان التي عادة ما تكون فيها النساء مهماشة economically ومستبعدة من القوى العاملة. في منطقةنا العربية أقل مستويات لمشاركة المرأة في القوى العاملة. ركدت حول عشرين في المية فقط من النساء مشاركات في القوى العاملة وذلك الركود استمر لأكثر من ثلاثة عقود. وبالتالي من أولوياتها هيئة الأمم المتحدة للمرأة حاليا هو حل تلك المشكلة بزيادة نسبة مشاركة المرأة في سوق العمل والغاية. Target لدينا هي زيادة هذه النسبة بخمس درجات مئوية خلال الخمس سنوات القادمة. وندعوكم لشارك معنا في تحقيق هذا الهدف. فتمكين النساء economically هو حجر زاوية في إعادة البنية بعد نزاع وهو ما يتطلب تحولا في البنية الاقتصادية والاجتماعية. يتطلب مضاعفة الاستثمار في اقتصاد الرعاية في تطوير سياسات سوق العمل في توسيع فرص التمويل المستدام للمشاريع النساءية خصوصا في المناطق المستبعدة من التنمية الوطنية أو التي تعاني من الهشاش. أود أن أشارككم في عدد من المحور الاستراتيجية التي ترشد عمل هيئة الأمم المتحدة للمرأة في الدول العربية. ونأمل أن تساهم في بناء قلصات المنتدى العربي للتنمية المستدامة اللي إحنا بنحضره حاليا. المحور الأول ما يتعلق بالعمل من الهامش إلى المركز. فقد تورنا مع شركائنا برامج هايكلية مثل منصة المنظمات النساءية السورية والممثلة جيدا بامتياز في اجتماعنا هذا. وهي أول منصة من نوعها بقيادة النساءية في سياق الإنساني العابر للحدود cross border أو trans boundary. وتشمل اليوم خمسة وعشرين منظمة محليه كانت تعمل في الشمال الشرقي والشمال الغربي من سوريا والآن تعمل في كامل الأراضي السورية. ولها أدوات стратегية لضمان وصول صوت النساء في التختيط الإنساني وفي جهود عادة الأعمار ولها كل دعمنا ك U N Women. في غزة وفي فلسطين وايضا في لبنان أطلقنا نشرات دورية توضح أثر النزاعات على المرأة نسميها gender alerts. أفضل أسميها نشرات عن وضع المرأة والفتاة وتطرح الاحتياجات والمخاطر التي تواجه النساء. وايضا أسسنا مجموعات عمل نسوية على المستويات الوطنية والانسانية لضمان استجابات لحاجات المرأة والفتاة في تلك المناطق. المحور الثاني ما يتعلق بالربط بين المحل والاقليمي والعالمي. فعلى سبيل المثال قمنا بتجميع أكثر من مئة ناشطة في بناء السلام من المنطقة العربية وايضا من أفغانستان ضمن لقاء عالمي واحد. ولم يكن مجرد مناسبة للتbadل أو للانتوركينج التشبيك بل خطوة стратегية نحو بنية تحتية نسائية للسلام. ونحن طبعا نعمل على تفعيل القرار thirteen خمسة وعشرين وتحويله من وسيلة مرجعية إلى ممارسة مؤسسية ونتعاون في ذلك مع جامعة الدول العربية. المحور الثالث تعزيز القيادة النساءية في عملية السلام. ذكرت مجلس الاستشاري النساءي في سوريا وهو أول آلي إدماع للمرأة يتم تأسسه ضمن بعثة سياسية امامية لل U N System. من أجل ضمان أن تصل أصوات النساء للصناعة القرار. وفي العراق دعمنا النساء المرشحات للانتخابات الوطنية ونجحت العراق ونجحنا سويا في أن تتجاوز العراق نسبة الكوتا المقررة مما يعكس انتقالا حقيقيا من تمثيل رمزي إلى مشاركة سياسية فاعلة. أما في ليبيا فسهمنا في رفع نسبة التسجيل النساء في الانتخابات البلدية بنسبة عشرة في المية. المحور الرابع الاقتصاد والرعاية والبيانات data نحو تمكين متكامل ومنهجي. ففي زلها شاشة الاقتصادات وتضاعل الفرس ندرك أن تمكين النساء لا يمكن أن يتحقق بمعزل عن توفير بيئة داعمة ومتكاملة. ولهذا نعمل على مضاعفة خدمات الرعاية في الدول العربية والtarget date عام عشرين تلاتين. وذلك من خلال شركات بين القطاعين العام والخاص بهدف خلق ملايين من الوظائف وتخفيف عباء الرعاية غير مطفوعة الأجر. أظن نتفق أن استبعاد المرأة من صنع السلام وبناء السلام بكافة مراحله بما يشمل الأعمار والتعافي يحدث ولازال يحدث على الرغم من البيانات والدلائل والevidence والابحاث العالمية التي تشير إلى أن العمليات الشاملة ومشاركة المرأة تساهم في تحقيق سلام طويل الامد وأكثر ديمومة واستدامة. عملنا هذا عشرين خمسة وعشرين له أهمية خاصة بسبب أنه العيد الثلاثيني لمطمر ومنها جعمل بجين وايضا الذكرة الخمسة وعشرين لقرار مجلس الأمن thirteen خمسة وعشرين. مما أرجو أن يحفزنا جميعا أن تشارك في تفعيل هذه القرارات الامامية بما يخدم أهدافنا المشاركة ويخدم المرأة والفتاة في المنطقة العربية. شكرا.
شكرا دكتور معاز سننتقل الآن إلى سعادة السفيرة هيلدة هارستاد سفيرة النروش في لبنان والقائمة بالأعمال لدى سوريا. كانت السفيرة سابقا الممثلة الخاصة للنروش في الشرق الأوسط وقبلها الممثلة الخاصة إلى سوريا والعراق كما كانت جزءا من التحالف الدولي ضد التنظيم داعش. تشمل مسيرتها المهنية أيضا مناسب سفيرة في فلسطين وسريلانكا بالإضافة إلى مناسب كيادية متعددة في وزارت الخارجية النروجية وسلك الدبلوماسي بما في ذلك منصب مديرة الشؤون الإنسانية ونائبة المدير العام للشؤون السلام والمصالحة. ونعطي الكلام الآن إلى السفيرة سيدة هيلدة هارستاد.
Thank you so much, شكرًا. Dear excellences, dear fellow panelists, colleagues, dear friends. My apologies for not speaking Arabic here, I'm working on it but I will speak English here today. First of all, many thanks to Asqwa for inviting me to this important event and for organizing it at the time where the topic of the day is timely and of great relevance. Thank you also to the regional director of UN Women for his important speech and the work of UN Women. Looking forward also to the eminent speakers after me to shed light on the important aspects of the roles of women at this time. We meet at a time of changes in the Arab region and globally. At a time of increased polarization and continued conflict and humanitarian crisis several places. But also where the countries I serve as ambassador of Norway to Lebanon and also to Syria. Where we have new governments in place who try their best to move into post-conflict phase focusing on stability, recovery, unity and peace. We see promising changes in some countries but we also see that foundations of international law including human rights and humanitarian law are being challenged today. And that institutions built to promote peace and multilateral cooperation are under pressure. We see that armed conflict continues to affect so many people causing unacceptable suffering to civilians hindering development and prosperity. And many countries in this region have faced and face some of the gravest humanitarian crises of our time. From Gaza to Yemen in Syria Lebanon Sudan Iraq millions are enduring direct consequences of military attacks violence displacement and protracted instability. The situation in Gaza where I myself have spent much time over the years in different previous jobs is nothing short of catastrophic. In Syria and Yemen more than a decade of conflict have devastated lives weakened institutions and decimated healthcare and education systems. Protection of civilians in these settings is critical. It's a critical humanitarian and political imperative and we know that in conflict and crisis women and girls are disproportionately affected. We know this not just from statistics but from the realities we witness on the ground through our humanitarian partners and local organizations many of whom are led by women. Norway's humanitarian strategy for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine is guided by the principles of respect for international humanitarian law and principled approach to saving lives alleviating suffering and protecting human dignity. Protection is at the core with particular emphasis on combating sexual and gender-based violence in conflict. In this regard Norway is proud to lead the call to action on protection from gender-based violence in emergencies for the next year for two twenty twenty five twenty twenty six period. This is a global partnership of over hundred actors including many in the Arab region working together to make prevention of and response to gender-based violence a life-saving priority in every humanitarian response. We are focusing on three core principles as a leader of this call to action. The first to make the call of action a strong and principled voice in the global debate. Ensuring call to action that it remains a principled platform for preventing and responding to all forms of gender-based violence in conflicts and humanitarian crisis. Raising awareness and mobilizing action. Under Norwegian leadership this platform will give priority to sexual violence in such context focusing on survivor-centered responses and humanitarian reform. So we will engage in high-level advocacy and expand partnerships including with non-members to promote gender-based violence prevention and response globally. Second, we are building on the momentum of previous leadership in on this call or initiative to streamline the platform's governance and reporting making it easy for local actors including women-led organizations to participate meaningfully and access support as well. And the third priority in this work is to forge stronger synergies between this call of action and other global efforts for J B V including those addressing conflict-related sexual violence. So we want to draw heavily on lessons learned also from this region where we have worked closely with women-led organizations and to promote survivor-centered response. So dear friends, one of the tragedies we face today is that while humanitarian needs continue to rise, global funding is falling. Gender-based violence prevention and response including access to sexual and reproductive health services have been particularly hard hit. These cuts come at a time when backlash against gender inequalities also gaining traction. That's why my country is holding firm on our support to women and girls affected by crisis not just as victims but as powerful agents of change. We are supporting local partners and have in several countries in this region in Lebanon in Syria in Palestine and other countries as well and work also with grassroots organizations both on empowerment and on assistance to survivors of violence. We also recognize that solutions to protected crisis including in this region lie beyond humanitarian response. That's why we also promote this humanitarian development peace nexus. Without sustained investment in development, peace-building, inclusive governance, political solutions we cannot reduce and hope to reduce the needs the humanitarian needs substantially and achieve the sustainable development goals. And this is particularly true in conflict-affected countries. And the work for women's rights and inclusion must be at the heart of these efforts. So in our partnerships with countries in this region we also support the implementation of the women peace and security agenda and we have our own also national action plan about our work in Norway but also our international work. And in Lebanon we also work closely with UN Women and the Gender Department of the Lebanese Armed Forces to also support implementation of gender-responsive reforms in line with also relevant national policies and international conventions ratified by Lebanon in this case. And also in Syria we have we continue we have for some time and continue to support also Syrian Women Advice Board and I'm pleased to see some members here today. And we also have other work with other civil society organizations in Syria and other countries. And we know we know from research but also from our experiences that when women are involved in peace work in peace processes agreements are more likely both to be reached and more likely to endure. But for peace to be truly sustainable implementation is key. And that also is a phase where gender equality often is lost where good intentions fail to translate into structural change. And that's why also it's a priority for my government to work for peace agreements to include clear commitments on women's rights and also that women are at the table and included in the implementation. And we also know that the very high number of women in this region take higher education and contribute highly to their country's development reconstruction and economy. And we have experienced in Norway that when women enter the workforce and also continue to work after they establish a family and have that the society facilitate for that that our economy grew substantially it was actually the biggest contribution to our strong economy bigger than oil and gas when Norway found that some decades ago. So that's also an important point that was also mentioned by regional director before me. We must also work to protect women human rights defenders and peace builders many of whom operate under threat. These courageous individuals are often the first to speak out against violence and the last to leave communities under siege. During Norway's term in the UN Security Council a couple of years ago we made it a priority to promote participation of women human rights defenders and representatives of civil society in the council's work. We also put forward a resolution on human rights defenders in conflict and post-conflict situations in the Human Rights Council, the UN Human Rights Council which highlights the threats faced by women defenders and underscores their role in shaping peace. We also tried to walk the talk at home and have introduced training for Norwegian police officers on gender-based violence and are supported and they are supported also to build relationship with women organizations on the ground also in international missions. And we also supported practical tools on that like the UN handbook Book on Prevention and Responding to Conflict-Related Sexual Violence. Dear friends, the road ahead is difficult but it's important but it's important not to lose sight of the principles that guide us, nor of the people we serve. If we are to live up to the promise of the 2030 Agenda and the principles of leaving no one behind, we must do more, not less, for those most at risk. That means listening to women, include women, support empowering of women as leaders in their communities and ensuring that humanitarian aid and peacebuilding efforts address the root causes of inequality and violence. My country Norway remains firmly committed to this work and together with our partners in the region, with UN and international partners, we will continue to promote protection and women and gender rights and sustainable peace, not as like idealistic goals, but as the viable path forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much Ambassador. Thank you for your reflections on some of the devastating events taking place in our region, but also on how the government of Norway is also supporting the implementation of the Women Peace and Security in the region. So thank you very, very much for being with us. سَنَسْتَكْمِلْ حَدِيثَنَا الْأَنْ حَوْلْ عَمَلِيَةَ التَّعَافِي مِنْ خِلَالِ اسْتَعْرَادٍ مَنْزُورٍ مِنْ لِبْنَانٍ حَوْلْ أَدْوَارِ النِّسَاءِ وَمُشَارَكَتَهِنَّ الفَاعِلَةِ فِي جُهُودِ التَّعَافِي وَالْمُسَاعَدَاتِ الْإِنسَانِيَّةِ مَعَ السَّيدَةِ فَادِيَةٍ نَعْمِيَ الجُمَعَةِ. سَيِّدة فاديا هي صحافية وناشطة بيئية واجتماعية. حائزة على شهادة الكفاءة في ممارسة مهنة الوسطى. هي عضو في شبكة الوسطى المحليين في لبنان مع برنامج المتحدة للإنماء. وحاصلة على شهادة تدريب مدربيين في إدارة وتفادي النزاعات تتبنى قضايا الجندارية وتسعى من خلال عملها لتحقيق العدالة والمسوات بين الجنسين. فاديا، من خلال عملك الميداني شهدت ووثكت خلال الحرب الأخيرة في جنوب لبنان. الدمار الذي شمل تسويت يعني المنازل بالارض بالإضافة إلى تدمير الكامل للبنيات التحتية والخدمات الأساسية. هل يمكنك تزويتنا بطقييم وجاز حول كيفية تأثير هذه الحرب الأخيرة التي شهدناها في لبنان بشكل خاص على النساء والفتيات? وصلت الضوء على تجاربهن الحياةية. اتفضلي.
مسأل خير للجميع. بدايةً بحب اشكر الاسقة على جمعنا هنا على هيد الطاولة البشفة كتير مهمة للحوار وتبدوا الخبرات والأراء. شكر موصول أكيد للحضور الكريم السيدة والسيدة الكرام. في لبنان لم تكن الحرب حدثا عابرا بل زالا غير ملامحة الحياة وحفرا في ذاكرة النساء تحديدا خطوطا لا تنسى. فالمرأة الجنوبية لم تكن فقط شهدة على المعاناة بل كانت في صل بها وجهة الخسارات المتناوعة. والنزوح لمرات ومرات ومازال النزوح إلى يومنا. اختبرت معنى الفقد وعانت من القلق الموجود. تحملت أعباء مضاعفة دون أن يمنح لها الوقت للانهيار. فكانت الضحية الشهيدة وصانعة الصمود. من موقع صحافية واسطة وناشطة اجتماعية وبئية وسيدة جنوبية بالتأكيد أشتوا أيضا هذه المرحلة. وكبت النساء خلال مراحل قاسية. قسمتها إلى أقسام لأستعرضها. مرحلة ما سميتها بحرب الاستناد، فترت ومتدة لفترة عام تقريبا. مع بدء القصف، لعبة النساء دور المحور الأساسي في تماسك العائلات رغم الرعب اليومي والاستهدافات اليومية. فواجهنا نعدام الشعور بالأمان القلق الموجود، إطراب النوم والقلق على الأبناء والعائلة. لتأتي بعد ذلك مرحلة النزوح نحو المجهول للبحث عن أماكن تقويها بعد أن خرجنا من بيوتهم بالسياب التي عليهم. وتركنا أرزاقهن مدخراتهن عملهن ذكرياتهم واتطررنا لسكن في أماكن وبيوت لا تشبه البيوت. وبأسعار خيالية وهنا مع كل أزمة يظهر تجار الأزمات. في غياب لتطبيق القوانين الصارمة بهذا الشأن. ومن لم تستطع الدفع لم يكن أمامها سوى مراكز الإواء التي هي بالفعل مدارس. وقد فتحت للنازحين والنازحات. وهي غير مؤهلة بطبيعة الحال للسكن مع غياب المرافق الصحية والموارد الغذائية والمعيشية الأساسية. هنا سأكون دقيقة ببعض التفاصيل ولو كانت محرجة. أحد السيدات كانت تضع وعاءا لتتبول به ليلة في غرفتها هي وأطفالها كي لا تخرج وتسلك الطريق من طابق إلى طابق. غالبية النساء كنا سيراتهن مع أطفالهن بدون الأزواج والأخوة والآباء لأسباب عدة. فاتطرت المرأة أن تتحمل المسؤولية من حمل الأمتعائز وجدات وحماية العائلة وتنقلهن بين قرية وقرية ومدينة ومدينة وبيت لبيت ومدرسة لمدرسة وأيضا تحملنا مسؤولية تدبير الطعام والمياه في ظروف غير إنسانية مع حمل الشعور بالخوف والقلق والذنب أحيانا. في يوم 23 سبتمبر بعد أن نزحت مع أولادي وأمنته عليهم في بيت أختي لز استقبلت فيه أيضا أربع عائلات. فكنا خمسة عائلات في بيت واحد لفترة شهرين. توجعت فورا لم أستطع البقاء في المنزل. كنت من مدينة إلى مدينة ورغم ذلك توجعت فورا لمساعدة الأهالي النازحين والأقرباء والغير الأقرباء. بقايتم لساعة الخامسة صباحا في الشارع أحاول مساعدتهم. لا أنسى على الإطلاق تلك الوجوه المتعبة والخائفة التي هجرت قصرا دون أي رحمة. أحد السيدات تلقى خبر وفاة والدها أمام عيني والدها وأخيها في غارة. وأخرى رحلت دون وداع أخين لها استشهداء أيضا في غارة ودون دفنهم. السيدات الحوامل حدس ولا حرج. أحدهن ولدت طفلها في سيارة الإسعاف بسبب زحمة سير الخانكة. أتحدث هنا عن طريق تستلزم نصف ساعة من مدينة سور مسلا إلى صايدا. استلزمها عشر ساعات واتناشر ساعة للوصول. تلك السيدة بعد أن وصلت إلى المستشفى وقد أخذت الإذن من السيدة الذين سأذكر أسماءهن. هي زينب حمود تقول لم يكن معي ما يمكن أن يرتديه ابني بعد خروجي من المستشفى ولم يكن لدي أي مكان لانزح إليها. فاتكلت على الله وبدأت عملية البحث. خسارات مادية خسارات وفقدان أقارب وأشخاص من العائلة حرمان من الطبابة والتعليم أيضا. في هذا المجال سوف أستعرض بعض الكصص لنساء كامثلة. زمز من بيت ليف جنوب لبنان امرأة قراوية لديها خمسة أولاد. تهجرت إلى سور لمدة عامين وسكنت في مركز إواء تركت وراءها بيتها وكانت تعطاش من قطيع ماشية قطيع أغنام. تهجرت مرتين مرة خلال فترة حرب الاستناد ومرة تانية مع توسع ركعة الحرب. خسر أولادها عامين دراسيين. التقيت عد عن خسارات المادية التقيت أيضا بفتيات جامعيات منكاسيرات لأنهن توقفنا قصرا عن جامعاتهم. لعدم استفائها أقصاطهن الجامعية بسبب فقدان مصدر رزق أهاليهم بالتالي. النساء في فترة النزوح تعرضنا أيضا للعنف الأسرى وخصوصا في مراكز الإواء. والمشاكل التي زادت حدتها في العائلة بسبب الضغوطات بعد أن طالت فترة النزوح. رأيت سيدات ابتكرنا لهن أعمالا واستطعنا حصول على وظيفة فيما رجال العائلة بلا عمل وهذا سبب نزاعات وخلافات في الأسرة الوحيدة. خلال هذه الفترة التي هي أصلا مستمرة لسبب عدم تمكن الجميع من العودة فبعض الكره كما تعلمون دمرت نهائيا ولبعض دمرت بعض البيوت فيها. انتهكت خصوصية البيت الواحد خصوصية النساء. أصبحت حياتهم مشرعة لمن يشاركهم الغرفة الوحيدة في مركز إواء وأيضا المرحاض الواحد في طابق واحد. رنا غنوي ناشطة من النباتية هي سيدة فاعلة وناشطة اجتماعية في مجتمعها. أخبرتني أنه في رحلة نزوحها انتقلت إلى بيتين ومنطقتين وذلك لسبب يعني آسف أن أقوله. وهي المضايقات التي تعرض لها المجتمع المضيف وكان من السيدات بسبب والدها العاجز فلا يجوز أن يبقى رجل معهم في البيت. وهو رجل كبير بالسن وعاجز فاتطرت أن تكوت سياراتها لكي لا تحرج مضيفها وتذهب إلى منطقة أبعد. وهذا يصب في هدف التمييز بين الجنسين. كل ما سبق مرتبة بأهداف التي جتمعنا لأجلها أو لأجل تحقيقها في العام 2020. الصحة جيدة والرفاه السلام والعدل والموسسات القوية القضاء على الفكر العمل لتحقيق المساوات بين الجنسين. المياه النظيفة والصرف الصحية مدن ومجتمعات محليّة مستدامة العمل اللائق ونمو الاقتصاد التعليم الجيد عقد الشركات لتحقيق الأهداف. فترة العودة هي ثالث فترة بين الأمل والانكسار كانت. مع اعلان وقف إطلاق النار وبدء العودة ما كانت الصورة وردية للنساء. انكسرنا بين العودة ولا عودة وذلك بسبب ما ترتبت عليه العودة من أعباء إضافية. بيوت مدمرة خسائر مادية خطر أمني عسكري غياب البنات التحتية كالماوى الكهرباء والمدارس. إجراءات عسكرية وإحتلال جديد حال دون وصول السيدات إلى بيوتهم واسترجعها. وهنا أستذكر قصة رولة أبو مهدي من الخيم. رولة هي زميلة وواسطة فهي لم تستطع الوصول إلى أرضها حيث استسمرت فيها منتجا سياحيا موقعا وتحتلت الحمامس المحتلة حاليا. عانت منذ عام ويزيد من التهجير ولا زالت تخسر وتخسر. جميع أموالها حجزت في البنوك كباك حال لبنانيين ولا تستطيع الاستفادة منها. هي تحت عبء اليوم عبء كرودن تأمل بسدادها من تشغيلي كانت تأمل بسدادها من تشغيلي مشروعها الذي خسر خسرته. أديء اليوم على رولة ليس فقط كخسارة مادية رولة هي احده سيدة الفاعلات في المجتمع والتي استفادت من برنامج الأمم المتحدة للمرأة في تدريبها لتصبح فاعلة أكثر كواسطة. رولة اليوم فقدت قدرتها على أن تكون فاعلة وذلك بسبب تراكم الأعباء والضغوطات المادية عليها وبسبب التهجير والنزوح والخوف وبؤدها بالتالي عن مجتمعها الذي تعمل فيها. تقول رولة رغم أن جميع أحلامي تحطمت ونهارت أمام عيني إلا أنني بادرت في البداية لمساعدة البلدية باختصاصي في المعلوماتية ولكني لم أحصل على جواب ولا أعلم السبب. كنت بحاجة لأن أقوم بالمساعدة بأي شيء امتلكه وهو قدوراتي. ولكن أستبعدت من هذا المركز أو من هذه الفرصة. وايضا من حكايات العودة التي لم تكتمل قصة منال غريب من ترحرفة. هذه قصة صمود وأنا تسعدنيها حققتا. هي هدي ما بيتها ومخبزها وهجرت إلى مدينة سور وفتحت مخبزا جديدا وهجرت مرة ثانية لتعود وتجد خرابا حل في المخبز الذي فتحته لكنها صمدت وثابرت وفتحت مخبزها للمرة الثالثة بدون يأس. لتساند فقط عائلتها وكي تكون قوية أمام عائلتها. بفعل لسباتها وصمودها ورغم الخسارات المتكررة والتهجير والأعباء الاقتصادية هي تفعل ذلك. خلال هذه الفترة كنت عصية على البكاء شخصيا وكل ما رأيته جعلني أصمد وأكابر على أوجائي لأنه ليس وقت الانهيار. وحدها امرأة خمسينية وقفت على أطلال بيتها في مرون الراس. تبكي بصمت وعزت نفس خراب بيتها ولا أنسى ما قالته لي كنت أعتاش من مكينة خياطة. لم أتزوج وليس لدي أولاد واليوم أنا في تغريبة الأخيرة هي غربت لأن قريتها مسحة عن الوجود. أتنقل من بيت إلى بيت ولم يبقى من عمري شيء لكي أبني من أول وجديد. هذه بعض مشاهداتي وهي كثيرا أكثر بكثير. والنساء لازلنا يقطعنا من لحمهن الحي سباتهن متشابسات بإيمانهن بحبهن لوطنه يبحثنا عن خيط أمل من أجل البقاء.
فاديا شكرا. وباتزر لأنه تأسرت أنا وامبحكي. شيء كتير عادي أصلا بس يعني شركتينا بأقصص نيسة وأقصص يعني حية وهيك الواحد يعني بتأسر فيها. مما شركتها معنا الآن يعني هذه الحرب كانت يعني مدمرة على الجميع ولكن بشكل خاص على النساء وبطرق متعددة. هل تعطيك دينا أن تجارب النساء وأصواتهن مسموعة ومعترف بها وهل يتم يعني أخذ بعين يعني تجاربهن بعين الاعتبار وبشكل مناسب في جهود التعافي وإعادة الأعمار? وبشكل كتير مختص الآن بعد عندنا نص صيعة وعندنا.
ما تعلمته كوني واسطة النساء الجنوبية يعلمون جيدا كيف يديرون الأزمات لكن أصواتهن غير مسموعة. خلال الحرب كنت وكان كثير من السيدات جزء من مبادرات ساهمت فيها نساء بدون منصب رسمي ولكن كنا أساسيات بحماية مجتمعاتهن. وكبت نساء نظمنا مبادرات وزعنا مساعدات فشلت البلديات والدولة في تنظيمها لكن اليوم مع الجنود المبزولة لمرحلة التعافي ما زالت مبادرات نساء موجودة لكن صوتها مغيب. هنا أستعرض سريعا أو نستذكر رولة أبو مهدي وكيف أقصدها البلدية من عملية المساعدة وصنعة القرار. وايضا امرأة أخرى كانت تريدها اتصالات من رؤساء بلديات للمساعدة الأهالي في الحرب. عرضت بعد ذلك المساعدة في عملية الأعمار والتعافي ولكن لا استجابة لذلك. هذا الشيء ليس عاما في بعض المناطق يتم دعوة النساء ولكن ليس بالمستوى المطلوب أو يكون تمثيل شكليا فقط. كل ما ورد أكيد مرتبة بالهدف الحد من أوجه المساوات مدن ومجتمعات محليّة مستدامة والشركات لتحقيق الأهداف فقط.
بناء على هذه النقطة واخر سؤال ناقلك من وجهة نظرك ما هي يعني أهم ثلاثة أولويات النساء والفتيات في جهود المساعدات الإنسانية في مجتمعك? يعني أو في المناطق الجنوبية والبكاعية من لبنان بشكل عام.
بعد العودة مباشرة بعد عودتي إلى منزلي ومراقبت كل ما حدث. يعني أول شيء فكرت فيه أنه هيك يمكن قريبة للقلب أكثر فكرت فيه أن طالب في بكل الاجتماعات هو التمكين ثم التمكين ثم التمكين للمرأة. لأنه لاحظنا كيف المرأة المتمكنة قدرة خادت الأزمة والديمه دا استجابتها. والفرق بين المرأة الغير متمكنة economically واجتماعيا ومن كل النواحي كيف كانت ناطرة الرجل أو غير أو أي حد من العائلة لا يكون عم بيساعدة بادارة الأزمة. أكيد الحماية والعدالة والدعم النفسي والاجتماعي خلق مساحت أمنا للنساء. اكيد الحماية والعدالة والدعم النفسي والاجتماعي خلق مساحات أمنة للنساء مساحات دعم نفسي واجتماعي حقيقي يخفف معاناته من صدمات قاسية sorry أيضا أريد أن مشاركة النساء في القرار المحلي جدا ضروري لأنه بدون وجود ستتكرر النمط الذي همشى أصواتهن النساء ختاما النساء في الجنوب لسنا بحاجة لحصة غذائية تحويل علبة فواد صحية وهذا ما ما تم تقديمها لها من منظمات دولية ومن منظمات محليّة جمعيات محليّة وهذا معيبو بحقها معانات المرأة الجنوبية والبقاعية أيضا على حد سوى ليست رواية بكائية بل دعوة للفعل وأن هنا أدعو للفعل للاعتراف بدورها وحمايةها قانونيا وإشراكها بما تهدم دعوة لإعادة الأمل وإعلاء تموح
شكرا لكم شكرا جزيلا فاديا نواصل حديثنا الآن مع السيد أحمد العيبي من العراق حول يعني مفهوم حديث نسبيا حول جودة الحياة وكيف يمكن دمج هذا المفهوم في عمليات إعادة الأعمار ونستمع له أيضا حول تجربة العراق في حقوق النساء في الأراضي والمنتلكات كأحد أولويات العدالة الانتقالية السيد أحمد العيبي هو مدير عام دائرة العلاقات العدلية والمتحدة الرسمية باسم وزارة العدل في العراق لديه خبرة واسعة في شؤون القضاءية والتعامل القانوني الدولي ويؤدي دورا محوريا في تعزيز الأطر القانونية والشركات المؤسسية المؤسسية لدولة العراق استاذ أحمد يعني يركز مفهوم جودة الحياة على تحسين رفع الأفراد وضمان وصولهم للخدمات الأساسية خاصة في سياقات ما بعد الأزمات والنزاعات والمقصد من هذا المفهوم هو ليس إعادة بناء ما تهدم بل بناء حياة تضمن الكرامة والشمول والقدرة على السمود على المدى الطويل وعندما نتكلم عن النساء والفتيات تحسين جودة حياتهن خلال مراحل التعافي وإعادة الأعمار تتطلب سياسات قائمة على بيانات دقيقة وتدخلات تستجيب لاحتياجاتهن الفعلية وانتلاك من خبرتك في العراق كيف ممكن للبيانات المصنفة حسب الجنس أنها تساعد في توجيه جهود التعافي بشكل يعزز فعليا جودة حياة النساء والفتيات وبرأيك ما هي المؤشرات الرئيسية التي يجب اعطائها الأولوية لضمان أن تعكس سياسات إعادة الأعمار احتياجات النساء الخاصة بشكل فعال وفي سياق مرتبة أيضا ما الذي تم إنجازه حتى الآن من خلال التعاون بين وزارة العدل والامام المتحدة والمنظمات الدولية والشركات الآخرين لدعم جهود التعافي في المحافظات المتأثرة بالنزاع خاصة لتحسين ظروف المعيشية للنساء والفتيات وحماية حقوقهن في السكن والأراضي والملكية تفضل
شكرا جزيلا لحضرتك سيدات السادة الحضور أسعد الله مسأكم بكل خير وسعيد أن أكون في لبنان الجمال والنضال وأن أكون في هذا المكان الذي من خلاله نعالج بعض قضايانا العربية والعالمية التي تهم الفرد بصورة عامة والنساء بصورة خاصة حقيقة في ظل النزاعات التي شهدتها منطقةنا العربية لعبة المرأة دورا محوريا لم يقتصر على كونها متأثرة بالأحداث بل امتد ليشمل أدوارا فاعلة في الحفاظ على النسج الاجتماعي وتقديم المساعدات الإنسانية والدفاع عن حقوق الإنسان والمشاركة في جهود إحلال السلام فالمرأة التي تتحمل عباء النزوح واللجوء والحرب والفقدان لم تتوقف عند حدود المعاناة بل كانت في مقدمة الصفوف لمداوات الجراح وإعادة بناء مجتمعاتها وفي مرحلة ما بعد النزاع تبرز أهمية إشراك المرأة في عمليات التعافي والأعمار حيث تساهم النساء في إعادة إحياء الاقتصادات المحليّة وتعزيز المصالحة الوطنية والمشاركة في بناء المؤسسات التي تكرس السلامة والاستقرار ولعلنا في العراق كما أشار السيد في كلامه حاولنا بجهود كبيرة وجهود مجتمعية جهود عشائرية جهود اجتماعية أن نعزز دولة المرأة ودور معافاتها حقيقة أهم ما يواجه المرأة هو الحرب هذه الحروب التي شنت على بعض البلدان العربية والعالمية والإسلامية هي التي كسرت هذا الكيان العظيم هذا الكيان الذي إذا أرادت الأمة أن تنتصر فمن خلال وقفتها وإذا أرادت أن تنكسر فمن خلال انكسارها لقد تعرضنا في العراق إلى حجمة تنظيم إرهابي دعمة بالعدة والعدد من بعض البلدان هو تنظيم داعش الإرهابي الذي عاثا فسادا في الأرض وحاول انتهاك الأرض ومس كثير من المكونات العراقية ولعلنا في العراق وقفنا دفاعا عن الكثير من بلداننا العربية في هذا الجانب لأن التنظيم الإرهابي كان يطمح وأن يجعل من النساء سباية في سوق النخاسة كي يبيعها لذلك أهم هذه المخاطر التي تواجه المرأة هو التنظيمات الإرهابية والحروب المرأة العراقية بوجه خاص عانت معاناة كبيرة منذ أيام حكم عصابة البث الإرهابي هذا النظام الذي كان جثما على صدر العراق الذي ميز المكونات العراقية على أساس عرقين وطائفين ولونه حتى أنه مس مكونا أساسيا من مكوناتنا العراقية وهو الأخوة الأزيديين الساكنين في أقصى شمال العراق في سنجار ومنع عنهم الملكية من عام الف وتسعمية وخمسة وسبعين لم يكن يسمح لأي شخص يزيدي بأن يملك أرضه أو داره بل عاد البث بوجه آخر من خلال تنظيم داعش الإرهابي ليهجر اليزيديين وليقتلهم وليحاول أن يبيع الأخوات اليزيديات في سوق النخاسة بأشياء وبفتوى ضالة وب تنظيمات إرهابية بذل العراقيون في سبيل إيقافها العديد من شهداءهم والعديد من ممتلكاتهم ليستعيدوا معافاتهم من جديد العراق اليوم في ظل هذه التطحيات وفي ظل هذه المصدات التي كان للمرأة دورا مهم فيها يمتلك العراق الآن في الدولة العراقية مئة واهدعش مدير عام وهو درجة خاصة من النساء يمتلك العراق سبعة واربعين معاول مدير عام يمتلك العراق مئة برلمانية ومئة برلمانية من أصل ثلاث مئة وخمسة وعشرين بمعنى أن العراق المرأة العراقية تجاوزت حتى الكوتير في البرلمان العراقي عدد النساء يبلغ ثلاثة وثمانين امرأة لكن الآن في العراق توجد مئة امرأة في البرلمان العراقي وهذا يحسب نصر للعراق ونصر للعرب ونصر للعالم ولتجربة الديموقراطية بأن تكون المرأة الآن في مجتمع عشاري أو في مجتمع قبلي أو في مجتمع مدني تتغلب حتى على الرجل لدينا نساء وصلت إلى أربعين وإلى خمسين ألف مصوت بينما رجال لم يحصلوا على ربع هذا العدد وهذا حقيقة جزء من التعافي الذي انتشر في العراق ونأمل بأن يكون في المنطقة العربية والعالم بصورة عامة أيضا لدينا في أقليم كردوستان لدينا مدينة هي مدينة جميلة أيضا عانت من سياسات النظام البث البائد وهي مدينة حلبكة كل القيادة التي تدير هذه المدينة هي من النساء المحافظ امرأة رئيس الجامعه امرأة رئيس البلدية امرأة الناطق باسم المحافظ امرأة رئيس حقوق الإنسان هو امرأة وهذا أيضا يحسب للمرأة العراقية يحسب لتعافيها يحسب لنظرت المجتمع لها في بأخر دورها الحقيقية والفعل رغم كل الظروف العصيبة التي تمر بها المرأة العراقية والمرأة العربية بوجه خضو السواء كانت في لبنان الحبيب أو في فلسطين العزيزة أو في اليمن أو في العديد من البلدان العربية التي تأنوا من النزاعات ومن الحروب ومن الصراعات في العراق تتبنى جمهورية العراق مبدأ عدم التمييز في كافة تجرعاتها كافة القوانين العراقية لا تميز بين الرجل والمرأة في كل شيء الدستور العراقي النافذ خصوصا مع نصت عليه المادة أربعتاش والتي نصت على أن العراقيون متساون أمام القانون دون تمييز بسبب الجنس أو العرق أو القومية أو الأصل أو اللون أو الدين أو المذهب أو المعتقد أو الرأي أو الوضع الاقتصادي أو الاجتماعي وقد شملت نصوه بشكل واضح إلى حماية تلك الحقوق وتحديد الأليات القانونية اللازمة لعمل تلك النصوص الدستورية أيضا تنص المادة الثالثة والعشرين من الدستور العراقي على الملكية الخاصة مصون ويحق للمالك لانتفاض بها واستغلالها ولا تميزة بين الرجل والمرأة أيضا نصت المادة الثالثة من قانون تسجيل العقاري أن التصرف العقاري هو تصرف من شأنه إنشاء حق من حقوق العينية سواء كان للرجل أو للمرأة أيضا المادة الرابعة من قانون تسجيل العقاري لا يجوز إجراء التصرفات العقاري على الحقوق التي صدر بها حكم قضائي حائز على درجة البتات أو قرار قانوني له قوة الحكم القضاء إلا بعد تسجيل الحقوق في السجل العقاري سواء كان المالك رجلا أو امرأة أيضا صدر قرار من مجلس الوزراء العراق منح ملكية الأراضي السكنية والمنازل فيه دعش مجمع سكن لشاغليها من الأخوة الأزيديين كما وافق مجلس الوزراء على بيع سبع مئة قطعة أرض تابعة إلى بلدية القوش إلى مواطنين من الدينة المسيحية حصرا وبيع قطع الأراضي السكنية والدور إلى شاغليها من الأزيديين في سنجار وفق القرار ثلاث مئة واربعة وستين لسنة اثنين وعشرين أيضا بسبب عمليات داعش الإرهابي عبث هذا التنظيم الإرهابي بملكة الأخوة المسيحيين صدر قانون في العراق يمنع تحويل الملكية للأراضي التابعة للأخوة المسيحيين ما لم يكن الشخص صاحبا للعلاقة هو الحاضر أو أن يكون أحد أقاربه لديه وكالة من الدرجة الأولى لكي تتم عملية البيع إضافة إلى موافقة ديوان الوقف المسيحي وهو أحد المؤسسات التي تدير أوقاف الأخوة المسيحيين داخل العراق أيضا تعمل الحكومة العراقية على رؤية من خلال التنمية المستدامة عام عشرين تلاتين بالعمل على المدى القصير على إنجاز المشاريع المتوقفة وتدليل الصعوبات والإلتزام بالمخططات الأساسية للمدني وتوفير خدمات تامة سواء كانت للرجال أو للنساء من خلال تعزيز المشاركة في العملية الانتخابات والمواقع المهمة في إدارة البلد لدينا في الأمان العامة لمجلس الوزراء دائرة عامة للمرأة ولدينا أيضا في كل الوزارات العراقية قسم خاص شؤون المرأة يرتبط مباشرة بالسيد الوزير ينظر إلى كل الشكاوى المقدمة من النساء الموظفات ومن غيرها أيضا لدينا شكاوى مواطنين للنساء أيضا ممكن لكل امرأة أن تقدم شكاوها لدينا أيضا مكون أساسي آخر من المكونات التي تعرضت إلى العمليات الإقصاء والتهميش وهو الكرد الفيليين وهو مكون أساسي من مكونات الشعب العراقي أيضا تعرض إلى اسقاط الجنسية في زمن النظام البائد وعمليات التهجير وعملنا على دمجهم بالمجتمع وإعادة الجنسية العراقية لهم وتوفير السكن اللائق وتسجيل بيانات الأطفال والنساء الذين أجبروا على مغادرة العراق في منتصف الثمانينات أبان حكم عصابة البث المجرمين أيضا الحكومة عملت على تأمين صندوق الأعمار والتنبيه للمحافظات وتقديم المشاريع الصغيرة لكل النساء الراغبات بإنشاء مشاريع قصيرة من خلال تقديم جدوى اقتصادية ممكن أن ينظر بها أيضا تخفيف الوحدات السكنية بنسبة خمسين بالمئة لهذا المكون الأساسي من الشعب العراقي واحيط حضراتكم علما بأن العراق تسعة واربعين بالمئة ونصف تقريبا من سكانه هم من النساء لذلك حسب احصاء التعداد السكاني الأخير الذي اجرته وزارة التخطيط العراقية لذلك الحكومة العراقية تولي اهتماما كبيرا بهذا الأمر أثناء عمليات الإرهاب أكثر ما تعرضت له من انتهاكات هي الأخوات الأزيديات هذا المكون الأساسي في مدينة الموصل وفي سهل سنجار وحقيقة أقر القانون العراقي قانون الأزيديات الناجيات وهو قانون مهم يضمن لهن الحقوق ويضمن لهن استعاده الأشياء التي أخذت منهن ويضمن لهن التقاذي ويضمن لهن التعويضات هو قانون رقم ثمانية لسنة واحد وعشرين أيضا ممكن لهذا القانون في فقراته أن يدمج الأخوات اليزيديات في المجتمع وكل النساء اللواتي تعرضنا للانتهاكات في العراق الخطر الذي داهمنا والذي واجهناه كما واجه الكثير من بلدان العربية هو موضوع الإرهاب وموضوع التشدّد الدين للجماعات الإرهابية المتطرفة التي تدعي وصلا بالإسلام والإسلام منها براء حقيقة الإرهاب لا دين له لا طائفة له لا قومية له الإرهاب يستهدف كل إنسان يؤمن بانسانيته ويؤمن بمبادئه والإرهاب باستهدافه للمرأة العراقية حاول أن يستهدف كل نسج المجتمع العراقي لكننا
بس لأن الوقت كتير عم بدهمنا عندنا خمستاشر دقيقة فقط وعندنا تلات متحدثات
شكرا جزيلا لحضراتكم وشكرا لاصغاءكم وأسف على اطالة
شكرا شكرا داعلا دكتور معاز كمان بيعتزر لأن عنده ارتباطات يعني خارج الاسكوآ سو بيعتزر بس بس راح يغادرنا تفضلي في مجال بس ما فينا بس طب تعطينا التوصي ونحن نعطيها معل سمعناك سمعناك الصباح وإذا بفتكر سمعك وصل وصل مية بالمئة
بس للأسف عندي
عنده ارتباطات خارجية
رسالة حضرتك هتوصلني من خلال
مية بالمئة مية بالمئة شكرا
بعد الاجتماع هجي الحضرتك وعلى التعاون مع دكتورة هبه أجرت التعاون وثيق
شكرا نتابع ووضوح العدالة الانتقالية مع السيدة ساميا كاسم ملحم سيدة ساميا هي ناشطة في مجال حقوق الإنسان ومخصصه في قضايا حقوق المرأة وتعزيز دورها في المجتمع من خلال التوعية والمناشرة سيدة ساميا يعتبر قانون الناجيات اليزيديات المعنى بمنع منح الناجيات من الإبادة الجماعية حقوقهن وتأهيلهن لعودة لحياتها الطبيعية ما هي أبرز التحديات التي تواجه المرأة في سنجار بعد الإبادة الجماعية التي ارتكبها تنظيم داعش الإرهابي وهلا يزال هناك يزيديات مختطفات وكيف يمكن تحقيق السلام والعدالة لهن وضمان حقوقهن ولكن بعتزر بشكل كتير مختص
شكرا جزيلا أنه من دواعي سروري اليوم أكون موجودة بينكم في هذا المنتدة الذي يعني بقضية التنمية المستدامة وخاصة في هذه الجلسات المختصة في قضايا النساء وليتحدث عن واحدة من أكثر القضايا الإنسانية الحاحن وهي معاناة المرأة الأزيديا بعد الإبادة الجماعية التي ارتكبها تنظيم داعش الإرهابي في تلات آب الفين واربعتاش في سنجار لكن سؤال الذي يجب أن نطرحه اليوم ماذا بعد الإبادة الجماعية في الحقيقة لا تزال الإبادة مستمرة وبطرق مختلفة لم تنتهي مع سقوط دعش عسكريا بل تمددت آثارها إلى يومنا هذا حيث لا تزال هناك الكثير من النساء الأزيديات يعانون من تداعيات تلك الجريمة البشعة وسط حديات هائلة تعرق العقباتها تعافيهن بالكامل وسط حديات هائلة تعرق العقباتها تعافيهن بالكامل أو تحقيق العدالة أو استعادة حقوقهن الأساسية. وبرغم الإقرار قانون الناجيات الأزيديات الرقم الثمانية لسنة الفين واحد وعشرين فلا زال تطبيقه بطيئا وبعض بنوده لم تنفذ نهائيا. في الحقيقة هنا لك تحديات تواجه النساء الأزيديات في جانب الصح والنفس ولم يقتصر على هذه الجانب فقط بل يمتد إلى قضايا العدالة والاستقرار الأمن والاقتصاد حيث لا تزال هناك الكثير من الناجيات الأزيديات يعانون من آثار السدماة النفسية الناتجة عن الاغطاف والعنف الجسدي والجنس والاطهاد الدين وما زالت ذكريات الاحتجاز والاختساب وبيع الفتاة والنساء في أسواق خاصة تلقى بذلالها آآ على حاضرهن. وبرغم الإقرار قانون الناجيات الأزيديات كما ذكرنا رقم الثمانية لسنة الفين واحد وعشرين والذي نس إلى توفير دعم الشامل في جانب الصح والنفس إلا أن هذا دعم لا يزال بطيئا ولم يكن بم مستوى المطلوب مقارنة بمعانات ومعساةهن سواء في العراق أو آآ في دول اللجوء. حقيقة هنا لك تحديات أخرى أيضا كتحديات قانونية والعدالة الانتقالية. على رغم من آآ تسميف جرائم دعش ضد الأزيدين كإبادة جماعية من قبل أمم المتحدة فتحقيق العدالة يواجه عقبات آآ كبيرة حيث لا تزال هناك الفين وخمس مئة مختطفة أزيادية مسيرها مشهولة. فهذه تعتبر كارثة إنسانية وجرح مازف في قلب كل فرد آآ من مجتمع الأزيدي. بالإضافة إلى تحديات أخرى التي لها تأثير بشكل مباشر على النساء كتأثيرات الاقتصادية وإعادة آآ الأعمار. هناك فقدان كبير من المسادر العيش بسبب تدمير بنية تحتية في سنجار والنزوح أكثر من تسعين بالمئة من السكان. هذا ما جعل من المرأة الأزيادية وخاصة الأرامل عرضة للتهميش والفقر آآ في غياب الرجال الذين تم قتلهم في المقابر الجماعية. وإلى حد يومنا هذا تم توثيق ثلاثة وتسعين مقبرة جماعية في سنجار. فتتحمل النساء بأب إعادة الأسر دون توفير فرص حقيقي لتمكين الاقتصاد. أما من جانب آخر هنا لك تحديات أخرى آآ في سنجار. في الحقيقة آآ إلى حد الآن لا توجد أي دائرة أو شعبة أو مركز التابع للحكومة لدعم وتأهيل النساء في المنطقة. لا توجد كادر نسوي ضمن شرطة المجتمعية ليكون ملجأ للنساء في حالات الطارئة. لا توجد دائرة واحدة حكومية تديرها النساء في المنطقة برغم من وجود백ات من الخرجات من مختلف الاختصاصات إلا أن هذا التهميش مستمر بحق المرأة. برغم كل هذه التحديات التي ذكرتهم نحن كنساء الأزيديات في الحقيقة لا نستسلم. فكنت من أواائل النساء من مجتمع منذ عام الفين واربعتاش. دخلت في مجال حقوق الإنسان ولازلت مستمرة وما دفعني أكثر في هذا المجال آآ أثناء تنفيذ أحدام مبادراتي مع الأطفال في مخيمات النزوح كان هناك الطفل لم ترهب باللعب مع الأطفال وكانت منعذلة تماما وبحاجة إلى المساعدة. فبعد ما تعرفت عليها وبحث عن ملفها والدها كان مستشد في أحداد دعش والدتها لا تزال كانت مختطفة ولكن أمر الذي صدمني طفل وبعمر ثمان سنوات كانت ناجية من عسابات دعش الارهابي ومدمر نفسيا وجسديا. ولهذا السبب دخلت أو درست في آآ جامعة الموصل باكالوريوس علم النفس لحتى استطيع أن أساعد هكذا حالات آآ بشكل علمي أكثر. وفي لحظة واحدة واحدة عفوا أدركت بأن هناك عشرات بل مئات من الحالات المشابهة وقصص مشابهة في مجتمعي بحاجة إلى الدعم والمساعدة. لذلك أدركت بأن يجب علينا توحيد جهودي في جهة واحدة. فأسست مؤسسة وارجين للمرأة والأعلام. مؤسسة وارجين تشكل من مجموعة من الفتاة والنساء من مختلف الخلفيات الدينية والثقافية والعلمية في سنجار تهدف إلى دعم وتمكين المرأة. وايضا تركز بشكل كبير جدا على جانب الأعلامي لأن اليوم للأعلام قوة ودور كبير جدا عندما نستخدمه بشكل إيجابي آآ لآآ قضايانا. نعم من خلال المؤسسة أيضا تواجهنا تحديات وأبرزها قلة الدعم المستدام لمؤسسات ومنظمات التي تقودها النساء في العراق خاصة في مجال الأعلام والمناسرة. وبرغم ذلك تواصلنا جهودنا باستمرار وبعدات قارير أعلامية ساهمنا آآ بالحصول على الكثير من مشاريع لأن النساء بالإضافة إلى ذلك دعم لفئة الذوي العاقم. حقيقة كان هناك تحديات أخرى في بدايةنا. آآ كان هناك مخاوف بسبب طبيعة المجتمع المحافظ منها العادات والتقاليد. لكننا تجاوزنا هذه المرحلة من خلال تقديم محتوى خادف يعزز السلام ويسلط الضوء على التنواع الثقافية في المنطقة. فحقيقة اليوم كسبنا ثقة المجتمع والمجتمع السنجاري هو الدعم الأول لنا ولعملنا. وانك شخصية لك يكمل هذه المسيرة للمطالب بحقوق المرأة ودورها في بناء وتعزيز السلام. سعيدة جدا بكوني جزء من شبكة واسطات السلام في العراق. هذه الشبكة جاءت كمبادرة من دائرة الوطنية للمرأة العراقية وبتعاون مع هيئة الأمم المتحدة للمرأة وبدعم مشكور من UNDP برنامج أمم المتحدة الأنمائي آآ في العراق. تهدف شبكة واسطات السلام إلى تعزيز دور المرأة العراقية كوسيلة للسلام والتركيز على النزاعات والقضية المجتمعية. بالإضافة إلى ذلك تشمل من جميع المحافظات العراقية وايضا من جميع المكونات والآآ قديان.
شكرا. شكرا جزيلا السيد ساميا على المدخل المؤثرة. آآ سنكمل مسار الجلسة ونتكلم على أدوار النساء آآ خلال في حل النزاعات وبناء السلام ومعنا بعد متحدثتين. آآ سنبدأ مع السيد أمل حميدوش. آآ هي ناشطة نسوية وباحطة في قضايا النساء والشباب وبناء السلام وعدو مجلس الاستشاري لمكتب المبعوث الأمامي إلى سوريا. آآ السيد آآ أمل ما هي السبب التي تساهم من خلالها النساء في سوريا في جهود بناء السلام وحل النزاعات تفضلي.
آآ مسأل خير لجميع الحضور والحضرات لكرام. آآ أنا كاتب كتير نقاط بس كرمام الوقت ولحتى نقدر كمان نسمع من من حضراتكم يعني الحوار التفاعل الذي دائما بيكون مجهدي أكثر بحالتنا. آآ بدي ابتدا الكلام عن أدوار النساء اللي لعبوها خاصة بسوريا بآآ كونه سوريا يعني آآ شهدت نزاع مسلح قد يبدو أنه انتهى النزاع المسلح لكن آآ خلف انقسام هوياتي ومناطقي يعني آآ عميق بالمجتمع السوري. آآ على رغم التحديات الكتيرة اللي بتواجه النساء السوريات آآ القانونية والاجتماعية والاقتصادية والسياسية الكبيرة جدا آآ لأن آآ لعبة الأدوار الاستثنائية بشكل مباشر أو غير مباشر بإحلال السلام أو بحل النزاع آآ الحاصل بسوريا. آآ تأخذ أشكال مباشرة أوقات آآ حل النزاع فقامت بعض النساء السوريات بتجارب كتيرة بآآ بوقع توقيع اتفاقية وقف إطلاق النار مثل ما آآ عملت مجموعة بريف ديمشق بمنطقة الزبداني. آآ قدرت هذه المجموعة أن آآ توصل لاتفاق لوقف إطلاق النار وتجنبوا المنطقة آآ بحين من من آآ نزاع مسلح جدا كان كان قاسي بفترته. لكن الشكل الأكثر تأثيرا كان من خلال هو الشكل غير المباشر من خلال مجموعة كبيرة جدا المبادرات لبناء جسور التواصل آآ ومواجهة الانقسام آآ الحاصل بسوريا والقطيع الجغرافية التي كانت آآ ما قبل سقوط النظام. آآ هذه المبادرات آآ تخذت أشكال قد تكون يعني بتوصيفة بسيطة من من آآ كما فعلت مسلا نساء من من الساحل السوري بمدينة جبلة تحديدا آآ بتقديم واجب العزاء لضحايا السجون والمعتقلات بآآ على أيام النظام البائد آآ في سيد ناية مسلا كونه صار مشهور يعني الواحد صار بيقدر يقول اسمه. آآ آآ هذه المبادرات اللي آآ برمزيتها آآ كانت تعمل رسائل للتواسل ولبناء السلام المحلي. وايضا قامت النساء من خلال المجتمع المدن السوري بآآ مبادرات كتيرة آآ باتنظيم وتيسير جلسات حوار آآ على امتداد الجغرافية السورية كون كنا في حالة آآ انقسام جغرافي ما قبل سقوط النظام. آآ هذه الحالة كانت أي مبادرة تقوم على أن تعامل سوريا كبلد واحد كانت يكون لها اثر يعني آآ نستفيد منه اليوم بحاجة الانقسام بأنه كنا نشوف سوريا كدولة واحدة والآن هي يعني آآ قد نأمل أن تعود فعلا دولة واحدة. أيضا أحد أشكال المشاركة ببناء السلام كانت من خلال المجلس الاستشاري النساءي لمكتب المبعوث الأمامي الخاص لسوريا السيد جير بدرسون آآ حكى عنه الاستاز معاز لكن ما كتير توسط فيه هذا المجلس آآ وأنا كعضوة بهذا المجلس تشكل بمبادرة من نساء سوريات آآ للانخارات بالعملية السياسية بدأت في جنيف عندما كانت وفود النظام والمعارضة تقس النساء بشكل كامل عن عن وفود التفاوض. آآ فقام المبعوث الأمامي بتشكل هذا المجلس الاستشاري آآ ليقدم المشورة السياسية بالدرجة الأولى للأولويات السياسية في كل مرحلة مراحل الصراع. وايضا تحول هذا المجلس لوسيت ومساحة للتفاوض كون عضوات المجلس بيكونوا من خلفيات آآ طائفية وقومية وحتى سياسية متنوعة. آآ النقطة الثانية اللي بدي أحكي فيها هي عن التشبيك اللي آآ تشبيك بين بين المنظمات أو الحركة النسوية والنسائية السورية والعربية. آآ الحقيقة يعني موضوع التشبيك هو أمر حيوي مهم جدا بمنطقتنا العربية لأنه آآ نحن كنساء المنطقة العربية من عاني تقريبا من تحديات مشتركة. خاصة تحديات العادات والتقاليد المجتمعية بمجتمعاتنا العربية. وايضا القانونية اللي كتير بيكون فيها تميز مبني على أساس الجنس. آآ بحسب أنه آآ هذا التشبيك آآ بالإضافة الأهمية كلتبادل الخبرات والتدامن آآ أيضا للمساعدة بآآ بكيف سلكت النساء طريق ليس في النتيجة. يعني مسلا دول مثل المغرب وتونس فيها تقدم بحوق النساء خاصة بما يتعلق بالجنسية وبالميراث. آآ من المهم الاستفادة من تجارب كيف وصلنا لهذه النتائج مع أنهم من نفس مجتمعاتنا اللي بتمارس تميز حقوقي على على النساء. آآ هذا على صعيد التشبيك الأقليمي بالمنطقة أما التشبيك الهام جدا بوضعنا بسوريا حاليا مع بعض وصول يعني سلطة من خلفية متشددة آآ وتوصف بأنها معادية للنساء آآ هذا الواقع يتطلب تشبيك بين النساء السوريات النسويات وغير النسويات يعني آآ نعرف نحن كتير نتشابه بواقعنا آآ في أوقات آآ يعني التيار النسوي آآ يكون آآ خليني أقول ما بدي أقول كلمة قاسية يعني محافز بعدم قبول غير النسويات ضمن الحركة النسوية. اليوم بسوريا الحاجة للتحول بين النساء النسويات وبين النساء من التيار الديني المحافز هو حاجة ماسة آآ لمواجهة الإقصاء والتهميش اللي عم تتعارض له نساء السوريات بعد كل الجهود اللي بذلوها خلال الحرب بمختلف المستويات آآ السياسية والحقوقية وتحصيل حقوق الضحايا والمعتقلين وما إلى ذلك من كتير من الأمثل لجهود النساء السوريات خلال الأربعتاش سنة الماضية تقس النساء الآن من المشاركة السياسية والمشاركة المحليه على جميع مستويات يعني آآ الفاعلة. آآ هذا
السيد أمل بس بدي اعتذر منك لأن عم بدهمنا الوقت وما بقى أصلا معنا وقت بعد عندنا متحدث.
راح راح جرب أختم أختم بأخر
جلسة تاني وناتريننا برا بس.
أكيد آآ التشبيك بين كنساء عربيات وعنجد هو حاجة ملحة آآ مانو رفاهية أو مجرد تحقيق العدالة هو ضمان فعالية فعالية سياسية شكرا.
شكرا لك سيدة أمل. آآ نتابع يعني نتابع هذه الجلسة آآ مع سيدة لبنا عز الدين وهي قائدة وناشطة اجتماعية وبئية آآ تتمتع بخبرة واسعة في تعزيز دور المرأة في الحياة العامة وهي عضو فاعل في بلديتها آآ في جنوب لبنان وتشغل منصب رئيسة لجنة المرأة تفضلي.
شكرا لعلي.
آآ بتحب أسألك السؤال
حكي باختصار لأن ما أختم حتى بس هكي يخده فكرة شو شو دوري أنا. آآ بيشتغل مع الناس وبحب الناس كتير. لا من قلبي كون مبسوطة بس كون عم عم شوف ناس أكثر وأختم عنجد بيئة حوالي. العمل مع الناس من خلفيات مختلفة ساعدني على فهم أعمق لتعقيدات النزاعات في المنطقة والأخذ بعيد الاعتبار لمختلف وجهات النظر. كمكثبت مهارات في الحوار الفعال والاستماع والتفاوض مما سهم في تعزيز كدراتي في حل النزاع بشكل فعال. وكذلك العمل مع نساء ناشطات في مجال بناء السلام زاد منوعي بأهمية دمج النساء في عملية السلام. نظرا لقدراتهن الفريدة على الوساطة ولتعزيز التماسك الاجتماعي. كما أظهرت تجربة أن أي بناء سلام لا يمكن أن يكون مسؤولية فرد أو مجموعة واحدة بل هو جهود جماعي تتطلب تعونا بين مختلف الفاعلين في المجتمع. في المجتمع المدن أكيد إلى الجهات الرسمية. إن تطوير نهية شامل ومستدام لبناء السلام لا يتعلق فقط بوقف العوف بل يشمل معالجة الأسباب جدرية للنزاعات مثل الفقر والتميز والتهميش والتركيز على حلول طويلة الأمان. أنا آآ بيشتغل بحل النزاعات وهذه مبادرات أحيانا بتكون مبادرات فرديب فيها أحيانا مع مجموعة نساء. آآ نساءهن واسطات آآ أنشأنا هك مع بعض تجمع وسرنا عنجد نسعة أو إقامة ورش عمل أو آآ جلسات آآ وساطة وحل مشكلات بين الناس بالمجتمع اللي نحن فيه. أعمل حاليا مع زملاء الوسطاء على تنظيم جلسات حوارية بين مختلف الفئات الاجتماعية لتعزيز الفهم المتبدل والتخفيف من التوترات ونقوم بالتنسيق مع شخصيات مؤثرة مثل وجاء أو رجال دين أو رؤساء بلديات. يعني أقرب شي نحطهم بالجواء وبس يكون رئيس البلدي أو الناس الوجهة بالبلد آآ عارفين شو عم نعمل بيكون شغلنا أمتنه أفضل. آآ إذا بدك أختم يعني ما آآ بالظبط آآ في دائما هك بس حبيت تخبركم عن شغلي وشغل زميلة الوسطاء من حل مشاكل. آآ ويا مشاكل كتير كتير آآ بحاجة نحنا كآآ هلا اللي جايين عليه نكون مدعومين أكثر نكون لنا فرص مساحة لنقدر عنجد نعمل آآ واركشوب أو نعمل حل النزاعات بمكان أمن ونص غير قد ما فينا إن شاء الله بختم بالسلام.
شكرا لك سيد. آآ أشكر المتحدثين والمتحدثات على مسهمتهم الغنية التي ألقت الضوء على زوايا مهمة من مشاركة النساء في التعافي وإعادة الأعمار ما بعد النزاعات. شكرا لكم آآ لحضركم وتفعلكم معنا ونعتذر كتير على الوقت شكرا يعطيكم الفعافيه.
إن شاء الله سمع مني. أنا عارف اسمك طبعا بس لك أنا بيزا شوي شبحن على مسيا هاي والمرأة والامسال في لبنان وتنقش في الوطنية أنا خاضرة. بس آآ
اسمي سلم النمس
انا يا ويل هذا
هذا لما كنت ماسة في كمان يعني لما هلا لو بس بعت لي أسئلي على وط
أنا خاضرة.
أنا خاضرة.
آآ بتمنى على الحضور اللي كانوا معنا الحضور اللي كانوا معنا بالجلسة please ازا ممكن بس تغادر القاعة الحضور اللي كانوا معنا بالجلسة ممكن تغادر القاعة
ممنوع
نادية في منهم نادية اللي حابب يخدر الجلسة الحالية يبقى بالقاعة
let me check what is your name exactly on zoom raise your hand now
can you hear me Dennis when I am talking to you
yes I can hear you
hey Dennis can you hear me Dennis
yes I can hear you I can hear you Josh I'm not sure if you're hearing me but I can hear you
oh I think I do hear you can you can you turn your volume up a little bit
my volume looks to be up
up can you turn the volume up speak a little closer to the mic maybe
can you hear me now
yes
okay
I think can you try again try again
can you hear me now testing testing
I believe so there's a lot of noise coming from outside so maybe that's why we can't hear you so much but um if you just try to speak as clearly as you can into the mic that'll help a lot
okay I will try but I think I'm trying on my highest capacity let's hope you can hear me
just when you open the presentation I will show you how to share go to zoom
one sec it just it closed on me automatically I don't know why what's happening okay recent all content okay
this one you want now you are go to zoom share share this one the presentation try it now you can everyone now can see it
okay
that's nice
great perfect are we gonna be able to see Dennis when he talks also
uh you everyone can see it ask him you can if you can see his presentation
okay Dennis can you see our presentation also
I can see the presentation thank you
okay good so Dennis I'll move the slides okay when it's your turn
okay alright okay
I have her presentation loaded up as well Lilian I have so what we'll do is I'll just pass the computer yeah we'll do pass the parcel so I think with that I think we're basically ready to go right
yeah that's whenever
okay maybe you give us a signal we'll we'll wait for your signal you don't run out of power halfway through hi how are you
I know Rukaya she's still in Jordan
I don't know her no no I but I'm newly joined so I might not sorry okay okay well this is with the regional office she might be at the country office yeah I don't know why it says Jordan here great okay yeah
okay welcome welcome everyone and welcome to the special session behavioral science as a pathway to development impact in the Arab countries very very nice to be with you today and first let me say that it is my privilege and my pleasure to welcome his excellency Dr Fadi Macki Minister of State for Administrative Reform of the Lebanese Republic um your excellency what a way to start the forum this morning as in the opening speech you delivered on behalf of the Lebanese government you amongst other points articulated the importance of behavioral science in policymaking you acknowledge you know the strategic common tool that behavioral science has become and a major paradigm shift in the Lebanese government hence really showing the examples of at the highest level um it's my pleasure to welcome you all to this timely and important session on the role of behavioral science in advancing sustainable development goals across the Arab state region unfortunately escalating conflict under resource humanitarian response to natural disasters political instability climate change driven food insecurity and migration all have posed enormous challenges over the past few years to member states the UN organization and their partners that support them yet what is often lost in our approach to development impact is the unique experience of people both as individuals and communities who are caught up in events each of the five hundred million who live in our region makes thousands of individual and collective decisions each day what to feed their children where to seek employment how to find safety amidst increasing uncertainty around them while we have often focused on allocating budgetary resources negotiating institutional structures or designing systems we must never forget to ask how our efforts actually support people in making the decisions that are right for them in twenty twenty one the secretary general recognized that complex development challenges demand holistic people centered approaches by including behavioral science as one of the five elements of the UN two point O Quaintet of Change as he wrote the UN cannot maintain business as usual approach if it wants to achieve the SDGs and deliver on our mandates across all pillars behavioral science is part of the wider methodological and practical transformation process that includes data digital transformation innovation and strategic foresight to ensure that the UN applies the best tools to confront contemporary and future challenges while each UN entity brings its own unique toolkits and preferred approaches and frameworks together we have a clear imperative to rally around the needs of individuals families and societies that stand to benefit from up to date and effective policy implementations today we are proud to bring together voices from across agencies governments and disciplines to explore not only what behavioral science is but how it's already making a tangible difference across this region so our agenda will begin with a foundational overview from my colleague Josh who is here Josh Martin UNICEF's Regional Behavioral Scientist will first introduce the core concepts of behavioral science and why it matters for developments I'll turn then to his excellency for a regional perspective Dr Fadi Macki Minister of State for Administrative Reform in Lebanon Dr Macki is a trailblazer in bringing behavioral science to the region over the past decade and you will speak about how behavioral science is already shaping reform and innovation in the public sector and leading to breakthrough in the particular challenges the region faces following that we'll hear concrete case studies one from the UNICEF Sudan Office on improving vaccine uptake and then UNDP's Lebanon team on promoting gender equality in home care duties two powerful examples of behavioral science in action we'll then open the floor to question answer and collective reflections and we'd invite you to think critically about how these approaches might support your own work and priorities so on that note then um I will now give the floor to my colleague Josh and Josh then the question is really what is behavioral science
thanks
thank you so much السلام عليكم ورحمة الله وبركاته
okay no I'm ashamed
انا اسف جدا على حاد تكلم بالجليزه آآ ولكن مع علي الوزير Dr Fadi عادة آآ بيستمتع باجبارني ان احكي بالعربي اكثر so we'll see if we get to that point later in the program ان شاء الله exactly so what is behavioral science okay we're gonna start with a little game um you know it's after lunch we've just had a ministerial session I think it's a little bit good it might be good to get our blood flowing a little bit and so I'm going to ask all of those in the room and if you're on the zoom or sitting at home perhaps you can participate by yourself but those who are sitting in the room I'm going to simply ask you to read the color that you see on the screen say it out loud so let's all do the first one together there we go what what color do we see here okay great yellow or you can say asfar if you want alright next one green اخدار green let's go a little faster احمر ازرق ازرق yeah the faster now faster asra ما لبي هسل okay what happened here we got confused okay we got confused but why exactly did we get confused now obviously I knew that we were all going to get confused how did I know that because we all in fact have different mechanisms of thinking happening in our brains at the same time and here I confused you by activating two different mechanisms at the same time one mechanism is one that is operating quickly and confidently it's solving quick problems in which you need to use automatic thinking such as um to simply telling me what color you're seeing and another is when you have to deliberate and think more deeply about what you're seeing and try to interpret it and that's what happened in the last slide where you're confronted with a conflict between the color of the image which I asked you to repeat and the meaning of the word and of course we we see colors and we we know colors immediately but we also those of us who are um use reading in in our daily lives uh know words and we read words very instinctively as well so these two things come into conflict and you're asked to activate a slower more deliberative mechanism in your brain in order to answer that question where whereas you might otherwise have used your more automatic thinking and if you think about what our brains truly are you know it's a machine it weighs about three pounds sits between our ears and it's evolved over many many generations to help us solve certain problems that can keep us alive so if we're in the desert for instance and a mountain lion jumps out at us from behind a bush or behind a rock our brains have adapted to be able to get us out of that situation out of danger to 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 run away or to fight back very very quickly without having to think but if you activate that same process when you see a post on social media that involves a political theory that you do not agree with um then you're very quickly going to put yourself into difficulty in the modern world right we we're faced with situations that our ancestors dealt with and that our brain has evolved to help us live with and yet in the modern world we have very different problems we have to encounter and the conflict between those two things can lead us down very difficult pathways like I mentioned we have these two systems of thinking um one is you could call it the elephant it's always on it's always there it confidently generates It confidently generates an answer, but it does make mistakes. Right? This is what keeps us alive. We also have the second ability to more deliberately process complicated information. You could call that the rider on the elephant. And this is careful, it's deliberative, but it's lazy. It takes a lot of effort to think deeply about things. Takes a lot of effort to resolve conflicts in your brain. And to do that, we need energy and we don't always allocate that energy as quickly as we can. Now, why does this matter? Well, I have another question for you. So, um, will you raise your hand in the room if you have an aspiration to eat healthy? Ali, take a to muhli, tanaa wa taam sahi. Okay. Most everybody, okay? Those who are not raising your room, I have some questions for you. If you're not raising your hand, I have questions for you. Okay. If you now, keep your hand raised if you have a concrete plan about how to eat healthy. Okay, most people, most people do. Some people maybe not so much. And finally, did you follow that plan last night at dinner? Or maybe I should ask today at lunch, because we just had a very, uh, a very nice sumptuous lunch at the conference. Great. So many fewer hands. All right, now, why is it so hard for us to follow these plans, you know, that we've thought very deeply about and intentions that we have so clearly? Well, generally, when we think about behavior, we use what you might call a conventional or rational model for thinking about decisions. It generally starts like this. I have a motivation, a defa. I want to do something for a certain reason. And then I need to get the means to do it, okay? Uh, maybe it's the money to do it, or maybe it's access to a certain system or a certain institution. And finally, information. I need to know something about, uh, about how to, how to do the thing I, I want to do. And eventually you get the result. So it's an equation that we, that we use when we think, and, and I, I would argue all of us have this equation very deeply built into our analytical thinking about behavior. So for instance, uh, I want to be healthy. I do, it's true. Uh, I generally have access to healthy food when I, where I go, uh, if I go to eat at a restaurant, or today at lunch, there was lots of wonderful salad there. I also have some knowledge about what foods are good for me. And you would think I would put those all together and arrive at a result in which I'm eating more healthy food. But of course, we know that doesn't always happen. So a more realistic model might look a little something like this. So I have to, before my motivation becomes a result, I have to first think about how am I feeling? What seems right? What do I see other people around me doing? What mood am I in? What happened to me yesterday? What did I eat this morning? All of these things might matter. And none of these things fit into the rational equation. None of these things are simply about means. They're not simply about motivation and they're not simply about information. They're other stuff. You might call them noise, uh, as uh, as Nobel Prize winning economists have done. So what is behavioral science? Effectively, it's an emerging discipline for thinking deeply about our decisions and actions. It's a way of complicating the rational model of behavior that I just presented. These are some books you may see, have seen. Uh, and actually, uh, uh, my leader, Dr. Fadi, has done some incredible work translating some of these books into Arabic as well, so you can find them. Is it, uh, well, Dick Thaler's book, I believe, is the one, Misbehaving. Is that correct? And Sludge. So two of the most prominent books by Nobel Prize winning economist Richard Thaler, uh, Dr. Fadi has translated into uh, Arabic, and so I highly recommend that you go out and um, pick that up at your earliest convenience. Okay. So you might at this point be saying, well, okay, humans are simply irrational and we know that because we see lots of policy failures around us and you're telling me that people can't be relied on, they can't be trusted. So why are we bothering, right? Why don't we just make policy as normal? Why don't we simply do our programs, do our policies and just accept that humans are going to, in some ways, simply just be irrational and difficult to predict? That is not the lesson. The lesson in fact from behavioral science is that people make mistakes, but they generally seek to be rational, which means that the mistakes they make are predictable. If we know something about the context, what they see around them, how they're feeling, how they interact with systems, then we can predict the mistakes that they're going to make, which means that we can do something about that. We can adjust the context. We can change the system. We can change something about how, what they perceive others around them are doing, for instance. And we can therefore also change their behavior. Or more correctly, we can help them change their own behavior. And what's great about that is that by making changes to the contextual aspects of their decisions, often those changes that we would make will keep existing structures and incentives and people in place. So it's not saying we're going to clean house and, and take away everything there is net today. What we're saying is we have a tool that can complement existing policies and programs and make them even more effective. Now, behavioral scientists love frameworks. Um, there's lots of uh, uh, different frameworks that we could go into that, um, you know, I'd recommend uh, for, for the research. Um, but what I will say is that behavioral science is best thought of as a, uh, a tool in a broader toolkit of behavior change. Uh, at, at UNICEF, we have a, uh, we have six hundred people worldwide dedicated to behavior change in the social and behavior change section. And they use many tools from community engagement to risk communication. Behavioral science is a relative newcomer in this toolkit. The idea of changing behavior in socially responsible and development-aligned ways is not a new idea. That idea has been around for a long time. And new innovations in this, in this field um, have been made using a scientific process. It's the methodology of science which has come more recently and has really helped to transform this sector. Now, that, that methodology is a mix of um, a, a scientific progress from psychology. It's a mix of insights from economics and also uh, processes from the design world, from the world of technology and applied design. So the methodology looks like this, very simply. First, you have to figure out what you're trying to solve, what behavior we want to change, okay? Very simply. Then we figure out what is causing it. Look deeply into the context that may be changing people's behavior in ways that they uh, may want to, they, they themselves may want to change. And finally, we use our creativity to design solutions that will fix those things and help people stay on the track they want to be on. And then finally, and this part is critical for any scientific method, is we try it out and we learn. We test to make sure that the programs, interventions, products, services that are designed to be, change behavior actually do that and do it in a way that is effective and aligned with the interests and the needs and the desires of those people themselves. And we learn from the experience. So just to bring this home to development impact in the region, uh, I was in Oman a couple of months ago. So this is an example from Oman, um, from the social protection program there. Uh, um, imagine that we, you have a, a young person who's benefiting from the social protection scheme uh, in a country like Oman. Um, clearly what he wants is to guarantee his family's health. Okay, that's his motivation. And he, let's say he has the means to participate in the social protection system according to the government's, uh, the government's decision to have such a system and to finance it. He may even know how much money he's receiving and what he can spend it on. But does that mean he's going to spend it on the things he wants to spend it on, right? That is a question. And we know that that may not be the case and we therefore need some support to help this person execute his own desire in this program. So finally, um, if we ask the right questions, we can come up with solutions that have huge, huge potential. And here are a number of examples of solutions from behavioral science which have made an enormous impact and that all of us are likely familiar with, even if we don't know that these in fact are coming from behavioral science. One example is defaults. So if you've ever filled out a form, for instance, to participate in a, a program, or if you've ever bought airline tickets online and you've seen the, the selection that says, um, you know, uh, no, I do not want to insure my trip. All right, and the button is already uh, picked for you. They guess you do want to insure your trip and it's going to cost a certain amount of money. Then that is a default selection. You have to actively uncheck that box in order to deselect that option. Right? That is an example of a private sector usage, but we see this in the public sector all over the place. Um, most prominently in organ donation in many European countries, uh, where they ask you to, um, when you sign up for a driver's license, if you want to donate your organs, if you're in a car accident. Uh, and um, if, in, in order to, to uh, not sign up for this program, you have to deselect the box that is already selected. And that intervention by itself takes the rate of organ donation from twenty percent to about eighty percent. So a huge increase in registration for a program like that, simply from checking the box ahead of time. Another one is social comparison. You may have seen this. Um, uh, if you've ever lived in the United States, you may see this on your, on your electricity bill. And I know it's been tried in a number of other countries in Latin America and in Africa as well. Um, where they compare you at the end of the month to how your neighbors are spending energy or water usage. And you can through that see whether you're doing better or worse, and that's very motivating. It turns out an influence to conserve more resources. Um, tracking progress, this is a technique which has been used in um, ordering pizza, but has also been used in government service provision. Um, for instance, in South Africa, there's a, a program that was studied that is uh, that, where they used uh, an online tracking system to show you that your complaint that you submitted to the municipality is in process and is going to be, uh, is going to be um, uh, solved very soon. And finally, checklists. Um, you know, they ask doctors, how, how many doctors would want uh, another, another surgeon who's doing surgery on them to use a safety checklist? And uh, almost a hundred percent said they would. Um, but i- if you ask the doctors how many of them think they need a checklist personally, only twenty percent think they actually need it, okay? But almost all of them actually want their doctor to use such a checklist. So these have also been used very effectively in many clinics around the world. So I think I'll stop there and um, uh, pass it on to uh, Ma'ali Lwazir, who will tell us more about how behavioral science has been applied in the Arab region overall.
So thanks. There's um, one person who has championed the cause of behavioral science uh, in this region and has scaled its influence to many uh, development challenges. So it's my, my pleasure uh, now to give the floor to His Excellency Dr. Fadi Mackey.
Doctor, over to you.
Thank you very much. It's a great pleasure to be with you here. Um, maybe I start with a bit of Arabic. Um, Abdurrahim Fikun Klaikun Be- Beirut. Wubel Asquah, uh, Sa'id Kier Anuqun Maakun Lyom. Wuxasana Mooguwa. Alul Masluqiyah Lehi Shagafi, uh, Min Akhtar Min Na'jar Sene. Um, so, Li Ra Ba Amnu Lyom Hu Abni Ali, uh, Zakaru Au Tadamu. Cadiqeh Wuzamile Bel, Bemajal Alul Masluqiyah, Badol. Uh, Alarabe Wudol Alalam, uh, Josh. Raisi Jalsi Kamain, uh, Kamain Nais M'aniyin Bel Alul Masluqiyah. Bel Yunisaf Yalehi Sabaka, uh, Ka, Kamain Ka Menazmi Dwaliyi Be Adraj Alul Masluqiyah Be Bajadwal Alameya. If you don't mind, I'm gonna switch to English and we'll kind of go over like fifteen minutes. How much time do you have for me?
I think fifteen or twenty.
Fifteen or twenty, it's very good. I'd like to start with this slide. That's exactly how it all started. And some twenty years back, I used to take my kids to school every Friday or so. And I used to stop at the traffic light, which is Al Manara, if you know, coming down from Manara, going on the right to Hamim Al Askari. Um, I would be, if I were the second or third car and some, and the first car at the traffic light is slightly ahead of the traffic light, they wouldn't see the traffic light red turning green. And if I'm the one behind, I would see it. By that time, I start honing. They realize what's happening, why you're honing and so on. The twelve seconds that are earmarked for this green, uh, for, for the green light would have elapsed. And by, by that time, it's red again and that person who's slightly ahead of where they're supposed to be on the zebra line is the only one passing on red. So I would be kind of contemplating, I'd say, why wouldn't they stop just before the zebra line? That way, everybody's gonna be happy. Everybody wins. They will see the green turning red or red turning green. Everybody's gonna be happy. And I used to say, how can we get them to do this? It's just, it's a no-brainer. It's in everybody's interest. So was contemplating for, for years until one day in, I think it was twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. So that was when I started this contemplation, twenty two, six, two, seven, two, eight. And then twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, I fell upon, I stumbled upon the book Nudge. And I did not believe that something like this existed. That was when I realized there was the whole concept of Nudge, the behavioral insight team, the Nudge Unit Department Sir Office in the UK. And I remember that night, it's just like unbelievable. So I realized that it's not about thinking that people are rational, because people are not rational. They would not understand it's in everybody's interest. And I started kind of unlearning everything I had learned in economics, because you learn about rational theory, about how we make decisions based on assumption. And I had to relearn everything that is behavioral economics. And since then, I kind of, I was kind of still hit by that field and I never, uh, never survived it. I'm still stuck in behavioral science and continued my uh, trajectory in this until two months ago, when I was called to government. So basically, this is one of the first experiment I conducted in Nudge Lebanon, and it's essentially running it as an experiment. So I was testing if telling someone who is driving, showing him that, that kind of post, which is Ahmar Wa Ifhon. If we put that, more people are likely to stop where they're supposed to stop. And we did it like a kind of micro experiment where we would put it at different time slot and remove it. Put it and remove it and then measure like we do in experiments. And as a result, it looked like those, whenever we put that thing, that you, there's like more people stopping where they're supposed to stop. So that's basically, that's one of the basic experiments. You just document, you designed as much as possible as a randomized trial and then measure and then make recommendation based on that. So that was really one of the earlier experiments we did. I had the, I was the, I was fortunate and I had the honor to lead probably two of the most, uh, two of the leaders in behavioral science in, in the region. The two first, foremost units. So one is Nudge Lebanon, which I founded in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And the other one is the Behavioral Science Unit of, of the, of the FIFA World Cup Organizing Committee. And done those around the same time. B four D, as it became called, um, is the Nudge Unit, which was hosted in the Organizing Committee of the FIFA World Cup, Yani, the um, Supreme Committee for Delivery and Legacy. And the, although the focus was on sports, how to eventually get fans to engage in sustainable behavior, to use recycling properly, to eat healthy, to organize security queues, like use nudges as such. But we expanded and we started focusing on everything. We will focus on internal organizational challenges, workers welfare, entrepreneurship. We did so much on education, on inclusion. We worked on sports for development. So that was the focus for the FIFA World Cup. In parallel, also, um, I, I launched Nudge Lebanon, which had two main themes. One, compliance and rule of law. And obviously, traffic was really one of the biggest things I was thinking about, how to get people to stop where they're supposed, how to do, get people to reduce their speed on highways. And we ran a major experiment uh, there as well. So we fought, we did also fighting corruption, rule of law, littering, preventing on violent extremism. And that's something Josh knows quite a lot about. And so really, we tackled very, very interesting topics. Many of you in the room would probably remember we've uh, kind of collaborated at some stage uh, in this. And the other area was socioeconomic development. We worked on financial inclusion, getting people to save more, getting people to engage in healthy lifestyle. And we did use quite a lot on, on, on this to i- in the area of COVID. Whether it's the early period, which was compliance, right? Getting people to engage in social distancing and, and so on. The second period before the vaccine was about mitigating, getting people to speak, uh, speak out on, speak up on, on, on mental health, reach out to kind of health lines, which was a taboo until uh, is still is taboo in the Middle East. And the last thing, how do you increase uptake of the vaccine? Now it was there. So a lot of behavioral roots in all of this. So that's, that was kind of two things I, I fo- focused on with, with the team. And we then did quite a lot, maybe one of the first uh, randomized trials that we've done in the region was on electricity in, uh, with Odell, getting people to pay on time. We used a kind of uh, a, an experiment with, with a control group and three different types of, entered three arms. One arm was using kind of the salience, um, of, of what people will have to go through if they don't pay at, on, on time. at, on time, if they don't pay, if they don't pay when the inspector comes. The second one, we used social norms, kind of telling them what is the trend and updating their perception that more people are doing it that way in their neighbors. And the third one, we used kind of the reciprocity, showed the Lebanese flag. By the time, it was still working, so it was nice as well. Traffic we did, healthcare, employment, financials. So we did quite a lot. But this is also something that many in the Arab region have started doing. So a lot of those have been replicated. Saudi Arabia, as you'll see, has done quite a lot. Qatar has done quite a lot. Oman, as you mentioned, Kuwait. Emirates is also engaged and many other countries have started doing this and I'll talk a bit about this. So there's so many Nudge units around the world. I don't know, we stopped counting as about 300 or so, like institutionalized as such. But in government, also, it's kind of happening at a very wider scale in government. This is across the world. But if you go to the Middle East, we see that most of the Arab countries have now behavioral science units. Some of them institutionalized in governments, others in academia, others in non-for-profit organizations. So we see quite a lot of Nudge units and this is non-exhaustive. Saudi Arabia has done quite a lot in decentralizing the setup of behavioral science units. And they've done quite a lot, almost 10 ministries, as far as I know, right now have behavioral science team even more. Oman has done beautifully in kind of linking it with the Vision 2040 as well and so on. So quite a lot of attraction on behavioral science in the Arab region. Maybe some of the important takeaways that I could maybe leave you with is no matter where you put the Nudge unit, the importance of the champion is something that is kind of not to be underestimated. So in, in the US, it was President Obama himself when he set up the Social and Behavioral Science Team at the White House, who was really the big owner for it. In 2010, it was David Cameron in 10 Downing Street, who kind of gave a push for the setup of the Behavioral Insight Team. And so many, particularly in the early days where Nudge unit needed kind of a chaperon, a protector as such. So when you want to set up a unit, you need to ask, do I have the right protection? Do I have the right champion as such to push? Now, even when you set up those Nudge, those Nudge units at the ministerial level, we typically see that they are engaged in broader than just the mandate of the ministry, in broader capacity building, which is not necessarily a ministry of finance if they happen to be there. The positioning also, if you are doing a Nudge unit at the prime minister level, at the one, naturally, it's likely to have a wider scope than if you have it at the ministerial level or departmental level. Another thing that is important is when we decide to run an experiment, it's extremely important to do it in a kind of co-creation way. So you don't, if you're an outsider wanting to run, so you just don't go at the ministry, say, I want to run an experiment. You need to kind of make sure it's homegrown, make sure that the solutions are designed co-creatively, kind of jointly. This is, these are lessons learned. Otherwise, it probably would fail halfway through because there's no ownership by the people. Academic collaboration is also very key to have, as you kind of run intervention, there's so much that could be done and could expand the bandwidth of the team that is working on behavioral science. And a lot of academia typically sit on boards, advisory boards of Nudge unit. That gives it also credibility, it gives it kind of more scientific approaches. And you want to do it ethically, so you want to use typically the institutional review board, the ethical review of universities that typically does some of that. Other things, I did mention some of the randomized trials that we've done. It's not the only way of doing it. Yes, ideally, if you have time, effort, you could design it properly. Yes, you do a randomized trial because that's the best way, that's what we call the golden standard. But there are times where you do it, you use the methodology of behavioral sciences in dissection, dissecting the problem, understanding the drivers and kind of, and looking at kind of some of the choice architecture that could work. So yes, RCT is the golden standard, but not the only one. As we go in learnings, one thing that I notice is extremely important is not only talk about what has worked, but talk about what has not worked, because you learn just as much if you document failures. And we have some failures in some of the experiments. As long as you talk about it, it's extremely important you learn. And it's not a taboo to talk about failed experiments. At the same time, when we, when people started kind of having exposure to behavioral science and experimentation, they would have so many expectations. And of course, that is something to manage because it's not a panacea. It's something that you need to approach. It's a, it's a complimentary tool. It's not the, it's not the only tool. It complements other policy tools like Josh mentioned. And when you look at best in class, we always say context matters, right? So what works in one place does not work in another. So yes, we learn from what the UK, the US has done. But ideally, you look at your specific cultural, socio-cultural environment. And here, looking specifically at the region, now we have so much richness, so much wealth of experimentation that we have quite a lot to learn from each other in the Arab region, between Gulf countries and the Levant country. And the last thing I want to mention is something around the, don't, don't think of behavioral science as something you do at the end. You build in earlier on the process. So from kind of, and that's something the Esquad does quite, quite a lot. And they have a guideline on it, which is how to help people in strategic planning integrate behavioral science earlier on. Imagine people with countries in the vision, in the strategy document, the five-year plan, then you're thinking about that, integrating it earlier on as opposed to doing it at the end, once the programs have been developed and so on. So I will stop here and maybe kind of pass it on to some real case studies, some of them fresh from the bakery in Lebanon. And then we'll, we'll go to some more questions. Mark, yours.
Thank you, Dr. Maki, very much for both practical examples of application of the science, but also, you know, taking us through some strategic positioning within governments. Now colleagues, we're going to look at further into some, you know, some practical example on how behavioral science already produced some progress in our region. And first, we're gonna go all the way to Sudan. I believe Denis Chiminya, who is the head of this SBC unit in Sudan, is joining us from Port Sudan. And he's gonna tell us a bit about human centered design and social listening for vaccine uptake in Sudan. So very practical. Denis, over to you.
Thank you so much, Mark, and thank you so much, Dr. Fadi, for encouraging remarks and tips. Just checking, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you well.
Okay, thank you so much. So just to complement, I think, the context that has already been talked about by Mark, Dr. Fadi, Fadi as well as Josh, I will talk about our experience in Sudan. I will just give an example of social and behavior change work in Sudan related to vaccine acceptance and vaccine uptake. And I will be much more highlighting. I can hear reflection. Okay, I will continue. I will be highlighting on our experience in using digital voices to improve vaccine acceptance. And obviously, UNICEF Sudan has the Social and Behavior Change Unit that contributes to all the other sustainable development goals that UNICEF is contributing to in Sudan as overall. And part of this work is much more focused on contribution to health, good health and well-being, but also contributing to gender results and gender equality. Next slide, please. So the example takes us back to around 2022, in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, where it was experienced that the rollout of the vaccine deployment in Sudan had disparities related to gender. And this was much more reflected first in the first round of the vaccine deployment exercise, where only about 31% of people that had been vaccinated were women. And that raised kind of questions on these disparities as this was an issue that needed to be addressed or to be looked into as the deployment itself was targeted at the general population. And you'd have expected to have uptake that was almost 50/50 between men and women. So interventions and use of the different tools that are available in behavioral sciences were applied to understand the situation as well as to try to respond to this and ensure that it was addressed. So my next slides are going to focus on this, just to talk about what was done to understand the situation and what results came out after that. As you can see, as behavioral scientists, we use different studies that are implemented or different tools that are implemented to understand behaviors and to dig out behavioral evidence that can inform our programming. For the time of the COVID rollout, COVID vaccine rollout, UNICEF deployed digital means to understand communities by listening to public sentiments and also monitoring engagements that were happening online regarding vaccination on the different social media platforms, especially Facebook, the open source ones, Facebook, Twitter and all, in a protective way that respects people's privacy as well as personal information. So UNICEF deployed the Talk Walker mechanism or two as a means of monitoring public sentiments in Sudan. That was very important in trying to understand the gender barriers that were there around vaccination. At the same time, UNICEF also did Phone Cap Survey. Obviously, this was done in conjunction with our colleagues in WHO. So it was a regional study conducted by UNICEF and WHO Emro in cooperation with Geopool. And that informed some aspects of what exactly were the issues that were related to gender aspects as far as vaccination was concerned. But at the same time, our partners, because this was a partnership done through the Risk Communication and Community Engagement Working Group with our partners in government, our partners in Sudanese Red Crescent and other local partners as well that were part of the RSCC Working Group. We did offline perception surveys where we tried to get information to further understand both communities as well as individuals and try to develop solutions that were relevant to them. So for the specific gender issue, next slide, I'll highlight some of the key things that analysis from all these three key sources of information told us. We clearly saw that the reasons behind the gender inequity in the vaccine uptake was mostly related to the fact that the demand generation approaches were not sufficiently tailored to address the challenges and concerns of women. There was lack of information on gender-specific issues. There were concerns about effects of vaccines on fertility, pregnancy, breastfeeding and overall sexual reproductive health. That information wasn't available to address the concerns that really related to women's choices on whether to get vaccination or not. But also, service issues were available, especially on the environment at health centers for vaccination of women, which needed to be addressed, ensuring privacy of women and in some cases, secluded spaces where women could access the services. But at the same time, during the pandemic, obviously, there was a overall perception that at the end of the day, it was men that were mostly out and they had, were at more risk of contracting the COVID virus compared to men, to women. And that had an impact overall on the risk perception among women overall and the need, the intention and need to access vaccines. Next slide. So all those key insights, which were collected from the different methods that have been highlighted earlier, informed some reprogramming on our COVID-19 response, just to ensure that we addressed part of the issues and see if that really contributes to equitable vaccine access to the Sudanese population. The media campaigns and messaging that was there on social media included aspects of women's concerns, especially issues related to fertility, issues related to some of the concerns like breastfeeding and all. And also providing examples, just as George highlighted earlier, when he was talking about social comparison, highlighted examples of women, prominent women, as well as women in the same, in normal communities that had accessed vaccines, where breastfeeding, where probably at the end of the day, considering to get pregnant or got pregnant during the COVID time. And they were okay with having vaccine and making their other lifestyle choices with access to the vaccines. So those examples were highlighted in our social media programming and campaigns and directly specifically targeting women. At the same time, our community level engagement, social mobilization activities, specifically targeted women in women groups, as well as in sessions conducted at community by health promoters with the similar messages, but specifically targeting women right at community level. There was advocacy done with the Ministry of Public Health, with the EPI teams to ensure that the vaccination centers had favorable environments for women, ensuring privacy and where it was possible to designate specific spaces for vaccination of women. So all these as a package, the messaging, the service modification, as well as the targeting, specifically targeting women, were implemented at once after the first round of the vaccine drive, just to ensure that at the end of the day, they can contribute to specific increase or changes in the uptake of vaccination by women. And I will highlight next on some of the specific results that came out immediately after implementation of this package of interventions. So within the, after, immediately after the onset of implementation of some of these packages, we saw immediate improvements in actual engagements of women online on issues related to COVID-19, which should be related to the fact that there was information available and there was exchange of information among communities, among the women on the topic itself related to COVID-19 vaccine. So that engagement in itself is important because it's So that engagement in itself is important because it partly satisfies one of the key conditions on ensuring that there is proper and opportune information available that is related to the issue of vaccine uptick, that for women to start the intention or the consideration of going for the vaccine. But apart from the actual increase in women's engagement around the topic and issues related to COVID-19 vaccine, women vaccination rates actually also increased, and that was the actual result that was being looked for. We had a nine percent increase in the uptake of vaccination from women, I think from around thirty, thirty-one percent to thirty-nine, contributing overall to an improved and not really balanced, but at least equitable access to vaccines for the whole population in Sudan. So overall, the interventions successfully contributed both to ensuring that women had access to the tools that they needed, information, as well as engagement amongst themselves on the key issues and concerns that were there. But at the same time, in some cases, also led to actual behavioral results in being able to access the vaccines in large numbers, contributing to reducing inequity in the vaccine update, which was a key barrier that was there at the beginning of the whole deployment of vaccines. So the gender disparity was becoming to be addressed after the implementation of these interventions. Next slide. Just in conclusion, I think we will show you or is shared in one of the slides upcoming, the detailed case study itself on actual interventions that were done, actual results. This was supposed just to present a summary of the overall experience, just demonstrating the value of integrating feedback into our interventions and ensuring that we utilize possible channels, including online platforms, to understand communities and be able to refine our interventions towards what they actually need. But from the experience itself, our biggest conclusion is the fact that at the end of the day, one size does not fit all. In some cases, when we developing our interventions, it's important to listen to specific insights, to go into specific related nuances that need to be understood for specific populations, to ensure that we have tailored, consensualized and people-centered interventions that actually address concerns of specific target groups. And in this case, we had specific women that had concerns related to vaccine uptick and vaccine-related access. And it was only through listening to those voices and being able to provide information in a means that was accessible to the women that addressed part of the challenge that existed. So that's a big thing that can be recommended to ensure that we use as much insight as possible and ensure that our responses are addressing specific issues that might be barriers because there is no one size.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for that presentations. And before we open up for your reflections and advice, we go back to Lebanon and now look at another concrete case of rebalancing home care work burdens in Lebanon. And my colleague from UNDP, Lilian Abuzeke, will take us through this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Lilian Abuzeke. I'm Head of Solutions Mapping at UNDP Lebanon, which is part of a global research and development lab for UNDP, where we are existing in one hundred countries, I believe. I'm very humbled to be on the same panel with a leading practitioner like Stes Fadi and with Josh and Denise. I think it's great and I'm gonna try to follow with our humble little experiment from Lebanon. So here we go. So I titled this Intention Action Gap: Digital Evidence on What Drives Real Change. I've been with UNDP Labs for the past five years and we've deployed more than six nationwide rigorous behavioral science digital campaigns that had data back. This is our longest-running one and it's also the one that's gonna basically be launched for its third leg before August 2025. So I'm quite excited to share it with you and I'm sharing it in a way where five years ago, I wish someone would have shared this with me because it's been hard to learn on the job. And it all started really with COVID in 2020, where basically an average woman needed thirty-four hours a day to do her paid and unpaid work. Find that time, right? So basically, like many other development agencies and UN agencies, we took on the challenge of how may we redistribute home care duties and responsibilities in an equitable manner between genders. Of course, this is SDG V, particularly targeting 5.4, which is the promotion of the value. So you're actually working with not like ending poverty, but a very nebulous goal. And what we did at the time is we launched a celebrity-studied influencer campaign on social media and we basically solicited a lot of celebrities, male celebrities in Lebanon, to show videos of them cooking, ironing, washing, so on and so forth. And we were really excited about this, right? But as Fadi said, basically, it's hard to just share the successes. What we really figured out in that campaign is wanting change is not enough. Whether it's us as a development agency, women who are the most impacted, or men who might want to change or actually are just benefiting from the status quo, wanting to change is not enough. Social norms as a behavioral science kind of goal is too broad, which brought me back to square one, which is this. It's the basically theory of planned behavior. It's in the textbooks. I went back, I studied hard and I looked at what's the actual best predictor of a man washing his dishes, which is actually like what actually comes before doing the action? And actually, it's something you guys mentioned, intention. And I'm like, how do you measure intention? How am I gonna do this? And actually, I discovered that there are four constructs for intention. And while social norms is the most common in our development field, there are others. Expectancy, i.e. what will this, what will this give me? What's the outcome, right? Attitudes. Attitudes comes also from attitudinal data, which is usually what people think they do. So yeah, I wash my dishes, but then you look at my sink and no, it's full. Okay? Social norms is what we're used to. So it's what people think we should be doing and what we think people think we should be doing. It's twofold. And then there was a lesser-known part that I really found a lot of interest in, which is self-efficacy. Self-efficacy is this term coined by psychologist Albert Bandura, and it's actually about your belief in your capability. I found it hard a bit to understand, but then I dug into it deeper. And it's actually a great component in general mental health and well-being. A huge part of why a lot of people go through life from a perspective of fear is they're fearing what they can't do as opposed to believing in what they can do. So I took this and I'm like, okay, what if we do a self-efficacy campaign? So this is what we did. In 2021, for over two weeks, the men in Lebanon were bombarded with five how-to videos about the five tasks that UN Women, basically in their images, research from 2017, showed that men do not do. Ironing clothes, washing clothes, washing the floor, doing the bathroom and tidying up a child's room. We took those how-to videos, we basically modeled them with a, with a street fighter, like he was a very masculine guy, and we taught basically how to do these things in less than five to fifteen minutes. And in it, we basically asked many questions about what would, we basically tested, what would get men to click on these videos, right? What is the incentive? How can I basically get to that place where if this is self-efficacy, them actually learning how to do it and then believing how to do it, how can they click? And actually, large and wide, twenty-one to sixty-five-year-old Lebanese men in Lebanon, five hundred thirty thousand saw those videos, twenty-five thousand clicked on the page, which I'll explain about later. From those, six thousand two hundred eighty-seven arrived at this page, which is further resources. So basically, they wanted to learn more. They actually, their intention, which I can measure now, wanted to learn more about And what's interesting is seven hundred sixty-two of the six thousand two hundred eighty-seven wanted more videos. They clicked on more videos, which tells me, even though that number appears to be low, but twelve percent in a digital campaign like this is actually a large conversion number. So this, of course, as Dr. Fadi said, it's not enough to do something once. You need to do it twice to show that it's significant. Is it actually significant? We took what worked and in 2022, we launched the same four videos, five videos, and called it Academy of Self-Independence, because that's what worked in the first round. And what happened is we had a much smaller budget and we ran it for less time, which in the golden standard is not great. But what we added here to measure intent is we added a small little dialogue box that says, I need more skills. So they go watch videos and if they actually have the intent to learn more skills, they'll put in, I want more skills. And to our surprise, from four thousand men who landed on this, we got actually two hundred responses and majorly about cooking, knowing that the attitudinal data of all surveys say that basically we shouldn't sponsor a lot of like men cooking because they already do it as chefs and they get paid for it. But look at them, they wanna learn how to cook. And this leads us to the third leg, which is this year. And we are taking these like two hundred skills that were asked for or so on when we distill them into a self-efficacy, fifty microtask, self-adulting, like skills. Basically, any self-independent adult needs these fifty things. And what we're gonna do is hire twenty male influencers from, not influencers, I'd like to say content creators who have some form of positive masculinity to show, from TikTok, Instagram, the board. And what we're gonna try to do is do these how-to videos in task-specific ways because that's how self-efficacy work. It's something within your control. You can measure how bad and then how good you become at it. And what's, what's interesting for us and with the data that we're gonna get back that hopefully will feed back to you is it's no surprise to anyone that most of the self-dependence tasks of life are gendered traditionally as female, while some, like repairs and maintenance, are gendered as traditionally male and some are neutral, like safety and emergency and life management. But what's gonna be interesting is us looking into this from a different gateway than social norms or attitudes. It's self-efficacy. If I am able to translate how to do this and if men are telling me they want to learn how to do this, can we come at it from another angle? As opposed to the disparaging content that maybe comes with social norms, like any other woman around you is doing three times more the work. A man will just say, okay, sure, make me feel bad about it. But actually, what we're saying here is, you know what? Let's test. Do they want to learn? Do they want to grow? And apparently, they do. So hopefully, we'll come back with more data and thank you for having me.
Thank you very much, Lilian.
Thank you.
And well, I think that's enough for thoughts, a lot of love information and great examples. So looking forward to hear your insight and I think Josh will take us through this exchange.
Thank you so much and thank you to both Lilian and to Dennis for some really concrete examples to follow up on, also some several concrete examples that, that Dr. Fadi gave us to start out. I think we'd love to open up the floor to the room. I think we have another twenty minutes or so. So maybe think about some questions that you might have, you might wanna ask any one of us up here. One question maybe that we could use to just get started, and if I could ask Dr. Fadi perhaps to come in on this first because I think he's really the expert in the room on this topic, is how a government official might go about wanting to use behavioral insights? If you've attended a session like this and you thought to yourself, you know, we should be doing more of this in our country and I can see applications on social policy or in health, or maybe, you know, we'd like to use Lilian's intervention in, you know, a particular gender program that we have. How would we do this? How would we go about this as a government? You know, all these examples are nice and they're cute and they're adoptable in their own way. But how can we think about behavioral science as a technique, as a technology, as a methodology we might want to apply in a sustainable way as a government? And so maybe, Fadi, if you could help us think about that from the perspective of a government official?
Sure, that's great. Can you go back to my presentation if it's possible? Just the last one that I didn't cover, just wanna stop there at the, yeah, guidance note, the next one. Yeah, let me pause here. So this is really, these are three examples of how to scale behavioral science in organizations and government. The first one is what President Obama, one year after piloting with the, with his White House nudge unit, he issued an executive order, 11307, I think. Is that one? We could check it out, but I still remembered. He issued that executive order. It's kind of a decree in what we used here, mandating governments to use behavioral science into their work, to review their programs from a behavioral lens, to build capacity in behavioral science for their officers and finally to coordinate with that behavioral science team for behavioral science. And as a result, that unit is no, is not huge because they managed, it was a success story. They managed to decentralize it, to create capacity across all federal agencies. So that's the first great model. The second great model is within the UN and then you'll get soon big credit as UNICEF and even ESQ and UNDP. Because in 2020, the Secretary-General kind of planted the seeds and I was, I had the honor to be part of his, what they call the management group, which is all the UN specialized agencies. I was with Cass Samsin and a few others, if you remember Josh. And there was some, there was all the agency at the time. And one of the recommendations was, how do we scale up use of behavioral science in organization? We did mention the Obama executive order and one year later, in 2001, he issued the UN guidance note on behavioral science, where it talked about success story, but kind of was less of a mandate, but still directing, nudging organizations to actually integrate behavioral science into their work. And as a result, many organizations now have dedicated officers, dedicated positions, dedicated units. UNICEF is one of those, UNDP, ESQ has done this great guidance note with NABT Lebanon on this. WHO is another example, where I had also the honor to be co-chair of their Behavioral Science Technical Advisory Group, launched into, in 2020. And, and, and since then, they also helped worked on a behavioral science for better health resolution at the highest level within the organization, at the assembly of the WHO, also asking ministries of health and all engaged in the value chain to integrate behavioral science into whether it's hospitals, whether kind of healthcare workers, ministries of health. So that was really, and that goes a long way. So a guidance note, top-down, is a great way of doing it. That's why for us in Lebanon to integrate, to have integrated this at the highest level in our commitment document, the Bayen Wazari or the Ministerial Declaration, is extremely important because then I could take this as Minister of Admin Reform and try to kind of push that through a lot of the public reforms. So this is a great way. Another great way of doing it is through capacity building, capacity building with organizations such as yours to build that capacity, help a lot of the government officers, give them a bit of the tools, the behavioral science tool, just to maybe not to design the most rigorous experiments, but at least to think behavioral science, to be able to ask for help, to kind of help integrate them in their own daily works, in how they use it with their employees in emails and so on. So capacity building and guidance notes are a great way to kind of scale. to kind of scale up the use of behavioral science in government.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Dr. Fadi. I think why don't we open it up to the floor now and take questions from anyone who'd like to? Please, we could go, we can go around this way from left to right. Does anyone want, if you would like to ask a question, why don't we start by raising hands and we can, you go ahead. Yes, why don't we start with the gentleman over there, please? And if you wouldn't mind also.
I might as well ask the question in English, just for our foreign audience. So there's some large-scale behavior in my home country of Egypt that I wanted to take a look at and is very relevant to the topic at hand. And it's cheating in public education. So there's, due to the increased inequality gap and the privatization of most educational institutions in Egypt, public education is lagging behind. You either have money to send your kids to school for good education and good university education, or you send them to a public school where for most of the year, they don't attend and kids will show up at the very end for the finals, either with like resources that they shouldn't be bringing into the test room. Doctors and teachers that are supervising the exam don't really care. And as a result, the kids expect that they can go the whole year without learning anything and get by during the exam because somebody will allow them to cheat. And this isn't just a school or a district. It's a K to 12 wide nationwide problem now. And I wanted to ask maybe Dr. Fadi, if you were going to go about this, if you were tasked with this issue, what would be the dogmatic approach to, like you said, behavioral science is not a magic wand that can't solve the problem. The problem is socioeconomic at its root. But if you were to sort of change the culture around cheating, how would you go about it?
Well, it's one thing.
Yeah, maybe we take two or three and then we can respond to all of them. Yeah. Oh, and Fadi, the microphone command. Yeah, let's take a couple more. Let's start, yes, over here. Sorry, I saw your head first. Yes, go ahead and then we'll come back.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Aulah Sidani, Riaastat Majis Wuzara bil Lebanon. My question to probably Dr. Fadi, in a country like Lebanon, where there's low trust between citizens and the government, how can we install a behavioral science action in a way to make it non-reversible? In order to make it sustainable, especially that in cases where there is a need for funding, funding may not always be available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mohammed Al-Hawari from Yemen, Ministry of Planning and Technical Cooperation. My question is a general question. How can we use the behavioral insights as the economic policy? For example, fiscal policy, monetary policy, attracting the investment as the macro, not as the micro? How can we use this insights as the macro level, not in micro? Thank you.
Shukran.
Thank you. Cynthia Kreda from the Millennium Institute. I'm an expert in sustainability and complex systems analysis. Thank you for the insightful presentations. Maybe I have more of a follow-up comment also on your question, Josh. Thinking a bit also while learning about behavioral science, how it can link up to systems analysis and interventions, like leveraging interventions so that we can create transformational change. If you can imagine with me an iceberg. So whenever we're talking about systems analysis, we refer to systems thinking or system dynamics, which is my specialty. And listening here, trying to link it to behavioral science, I'd like to maybe make a joint insight. So if you imagine an iceberg where you have the tip of the iceberg, you have the events. So normally, when we're trying to solve problems, complex problems, we look at the events. But this is not enough. And this is what systems analysis tells us. You need to dig deeper, look at the patterns, not only the events, because you have usually recurring problems due to complex systems. And if you dig even deeper into the iceberg, you reach the underlying structure which is causing these patterns. And this is where systems thinking and systems analysis is very useful. But actually, if you look at the last, the deepest layer of the iceberg, you have mental models. And this is where I believe behavioral science plays a very important role. And this is where I see the power of integrating these two methodologies, if you want to understand maybe a bit better how we can scale up the solutions that we come up with in behavioral science to the policy level by utilizing, by integrating these two methodologies together. And I'd be very interested in talking and discussing this further, maybe outside the room, as we work on an integrated sustainable development simulator to advance such policies and support governments in doing so. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Tafadri.
Shukran. Baqdara asal bil Arabiya.
Tafadri.
Shukran. Shukran al-madahalat shahih. Lana moudouyaani shahih yani mohim. Wijuz kan fi mahaualat lada al-ESQWAH fi meraal sabeka la idhial hada al-najj al-takhtit fi al-manntaka al-arabiya. Walaqin ma'twalsalach al-johd. Shahih yani ana bahaual adtalag. Ana isma'mod ah taaya, wakil wazaret takhtit fi dawlat palestine. Waha'na masooliyan an'idareta amaliit al-takhtit wa tanseek amaliit al-takhtit wa teakud anna muasasatna tagmal dim al-najj takhtit wa tawur piyasat al-aqalaa birai al-hudood al-dunya man amaliit al-tawur piyasat. Waha'na yon nuzr laa i'm mukkila. Tab, mahaual nafhamha. Wijzak min al-asela li mnisalha. Mnisal jizak min al-asela li hia tataalk basuluk al-nas. Yani, idha ana badda adtalag al-ahsabi al-mithal, leish al-nas au inkhifad nisbeet al-iltahaqal al-teglim maqab al-madrasi? Badda afham, la'ana mohma mishayfin ahamiita al-teglim la'alafal fi al-tahsiil au kada. Au idha badda adtalag al-zawajal mabaqar. Fi al-asela mnisalha, leish al-nas tatarfih? Fasuali ana shwayi, wa hatta bagda, yani, al-aliyaan, al-kiyarat piyasatiya hia inghas lafhamak, la-al-asbaab, la-l-mukkila. Waka'na, yani, shwayi yon ajja adtalag al-alfad, mathan fi al-Sudan, hnaaka takaatag bijzak giroi la-l-manaj al-suluki fi tahlil piyasat. Idha ana baddi agziz wa shahr anna hnaaka ahamiima wa baddi shway adfaq bedamji al-manaj al-suluki fi amaliit al-takhtit lada muasasat al-falestiniya. Shul mahatat au l-merkazat li antmehla shway al-aqalaa? Weni mahatat li fi al-aliyaan labd mnetakud minha? Wa idha binnam nindla al-amam, shu tawsiyat ku ilna? Yani, ka fariq, la'ana, al-aliyaan, waha'na hnaaka fariq, al-aqalaa, mummathal men kallal wazarat wibitali munkin nashir zalik besraa andi muasasat. Lo, mahatat al-asasiyat, shu tawsiyat li b'tojhun naiha, li fakir fi ha al-wad al-aqalaa fi al-marahal al-kadama. Shukran.
Shukran, Jazila. Okay. Gataqid anna kan fi al-katimina al-asela al-manasiba wa mohma jadaan. Xalina nujib anna fi fi asra waqat munkin, walaqin yani, bi'amaq, al-manasib la-ahamita sual. We had a question, just to quickly summarize. We had a question regarding cheating in public education in Egypt. A question on how we can make funding for behavioral insights more sustainable, given low trust in government. A question from Yemen on how behavioral science can be applied at the macro level and on the relevance of systems-level thinking and systems complexity in scaling up behavioral science and also on planning policy. The question from Palestine on what, perhaps what order we should think about using behavioral science relative to other approaches. Dr. Fadi, I'm tempted to give you the floor for as many of those as you'd like to answer and the rest of us can come in perhaps along the edges.
Should chip in here. On the cheating, of course, it's a very tough one. I could offer some thoughts. There's quite a lot of literature on cheating in behavioral science and a lot of experiments that were tested. I could give you one that is related. And maybe we could just discuss offline, how to do it. But of course, you need to kind of understand the drivers of why people do it. Is it because there's no compliance? Is it because there's no respectful regulation? There's no want to enforce? So that is important to understand. But just to give you one example, in the organizing committee for the FIFA World Cup, we used to have so many volunteers who wanted to volunteer and work during the event. And we opened on the website, kind of application form for people to come in. And we tried to do kind of invitations during what we call tester events. Just before the 2022 event, we had in 2020 Club World Cup, Arab Cup, Emir Cup and so on. So we had a couple of kind of events just for people to test. And in one of the first event, where we had invited volunteers, we had asked them to indicate which languages they speak. And we wanted to see if they spoke Arabic or English or French and so on. So in specifically on the Arabic, a lot of them would come and say, yeah, yeah, we speak Arabic. And they say, we have five answers, like no Arabic, basic and so all the way to proficient and native. So after one event, we realized people whom we placed with the Arab community did not really speak Arabic. So it was kind of problem with customer satisfaction and a lot of unhappy fans. So that was a problem, a very specific problem. They came to us as the behavioral scientists. They say, how can we increase honesty of the reporting of the language? So very specific, not to solve the Middle Eastern problem or the macro problem, but very specific. And I'll come back to you on how to integrate those solutions in specific challenges. So for this one, we did a randomized trial and then we used something that was responsible for a lot of the bad reputation of behavioral science, the saga of Van Aerly and what's her name?
Nina Mazauri.
And the third one.
Francesca Gino.
Yeah, Francesca Gino. So basically, what we did is just randomized people who were applying into two groups. A control group who would fill the application form with the placebo, the control group. And the treatment one would be given just a small box would say, I commit to saying the truth in my answers. And the results were very interesting and we were going to publish like very transparently the results. So we noticed a major shift in those who kind of, who said we, like we, so more people said we are, we don't speak Arabic, right? And less people said we are native and professional. So it kind of, it shifted in a significant way. So that was one way of increasing honesty. I mean, I'm not saying that you should replicate this as is, but I mean, just to say that you need to break down the problem and try to address what we call a target behavior. What exactly you're trying to change in this regard? Which brings me to the second point on how do you integrate it in macro policies in large kind of fiscal space? The problem is that you need to find, you need to find a challenge and then break down the challenge into very measurable and manageable target behaviors and try to take them one by one. So you become effectively a lab, like working one experiment at a time and then doing it. And there are different ways to integrate behavioral science in understanding the situation. But effectively, you cannot work at 500-feet-high problem. You need to bring it down to something that is target, that is measurable. Maybe I'll give other, the floor to speak.
Yeah, I have a few thoughts also, but Lilian, I think I want to come to you next because there are some questions I know that I think that you'll have thoughts on in particular. I'm thinking also particularly about the systems-level piece. I know that's something UNDP has done a lot of work on recently. How does systems thinking integrate with behavioral science? Do you want to take that one on?
Sure. Actually, you read my mind. That's the one I wanted. Hi Cynthia. I think it's a great question and also that's a great relationship that you've spotted. Actually, I'll go back to Josh's first talk when he was showing us the brain and he was telling us there are things that we do automatically and things that we need to do more deliberately. And this is actually where we as humans are systems. So that's called system one thinking and system two thinking. This is exactly what you're saying. It's just in us as humans. And as UNDP, I love that, I am very biased, I'm sorry, UNICEF. But like, I love that we're a generalist development agency where because we are working, for example, in livelihoods, in gender, with governments, on energy, you're able to look at that system from a wide angle and see the, if you move this, what happens? Not actually see it in real life, but we have those people in the room. And I think this is how to take it forward, like have more people in the room from the different spaces to actually get systems to move or to find the needle in the system that's gonna move the system. Thanks, Josh.
Thank you. Yeah, I would add to that. I think, you know, systems eventually are made up of people, right? I mean, people work in systems, even big systems are all made up of individuals who are doing their jobs and all face incentives and all face challenges of motivation, of means, of information and also of all the other factors that we've talked about. So when you think about systems change, I think, I mean, as you, as you said in your question and as Lilian has also just said, I think, you know, these are humans that are affected by all of the same phenomena that we're talking about. And so any approach that you're going to try to scale through a system, you have to take into account the fact that the people scaling it are also people and they have their own, you know, difficulties and challenges of taking biases, taking intention and translating it into action. So you need some sort of solution for that. You know, behavioral science is not just a thing you can hand off and forget about. It's something you have to, you have to design its own uptake pathway as it goes forth. And that actually relates to a point I was going to make about the macro policy question. You know, one thing we see over and over again in the research is that individuals at the top of decision-making structures, whether they be ministers of government, whether they be CEOs, whether they be, you know, investors, all of which you might think are immune to behavioral science because they are, you know, these are people who are facing very, very severe incentives, political incentives, economic incentives. You know, what room is left for someone to be biased by what they see others around them doing? Because if they make a mistake, you know, millions of dollars are at stake or their political career is at stake, something big is at stake. So you would think the bigger the stakes, the less biased a person at a decision-making level would be. Actually, the research says exactly the opposite, that people are at those levels are just as biased. In fact, they may be more biased because they lack for some of the safeguards that the rest of us have that they don't have. They don't have many peers, for instance. So it's not easy for them to see what most people around them are doing. You know, they're sort of imagining what people, what other ministers would do in their situation, but they may not have very easy examples to go to. And so they're, they may be even more biased by particular perceptions. So, you know, I don't have a, there's no, there's no broad solution I would recommend for macro policy, but I will say there is new, there are studies that have come out recently showing that high-level decision-makers, investors are all just as biased in their perceptions. And what follows from that is that similar solutions to those that were presented here may be impactful even for those audiences. And I think in terms of just, yeah, in terms of planning in general and policy adaptation, I would say, I think, you said it correctly. There are many different aspects of every policy problem, obviously. And I think it's very, you know, if you're thinking about how do we integrate the behavioral approach when we're so focused on the socioeconomic questions that are involved? We're so focused on the security aspects? We're so focused on the bedrock issues of policymaking that we have to pay attention to? I think you're right. No one here on this panel would say that behavioral science should supersede any of those core challenges. Those are the, those are the things you have to think about first. All we're saying is that behavioral science should not be ignored once those other elements are put in place. It's a complimentary, it's a complimentary toolkit that we're offering. It's not an alternative toolkit. It's simply one that works very well in tandem with the bedrock of policy as we know it. Too often, policymaking stops at those levels. And what we're saying is that it should also include insights about how individuals interact with those systems and not just put all the responsibility on the system themselves. and not just put all the responsibility on the system themselves. So that's all I have to offer on that point. I think we've covered quite a lot of ground. So I think I'll hand it back to Mark to bring us home.
Thanks very much, Josh. And I think I really liked it because we went through, you know, very concrete, very concrete examples and points and also, you know, very strategic, system-based and institutional government ownership type of, you know, issue. So that's very, very, very useful. Maybe three takeaway. I mean, first one, as we said, is behavioral science offers a powerful people-centered approach to development. And you saw it complemented traditional tools. So that's really important tools in the, in the box that we have. Number two is the case studies from the Sudan and Lebanon show how behavioral insights can unlock measurable development gains. You know, this example demonstrates that even small shifts in communication or design can lead to significant outcomes. And maybe the third one, scaling behavioral science in the Arab region requires institutional investments and cross-sector collaboration. So governments, UN agencies, local actors are encouraged to build capacity, establish behavioral insights units and integrate their methodology into policy, design and implementation to better serve our populations and accelerate progress on the SDGs. So thanks very much to all of you. Thanks, Dr. Fadi. I think it was a really, really incredible experience. Josh, Dennis and Lilian, again, thank you very much and good evening to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks for bringing that to behavioral science. Josh, thank you for bringing me back to the realm of behavioral science.
Yeah. Especially.
Actually, it's helpful for you and all that you're trying to do right now.
It's fun. Yeah.
You have a major uphill battle in a country where everyone assumes rightly that the problems are deeply structural, you know, to try to say behavioral science.
He's going to solve your problem. A major randomized trial in Egypt.
Yeah, let's do it. Let's do it, let's talk, let's talk. Are you American or...? I'm an American with one and a half feet.
Well, now the other thing is all cheating.